Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call it order of the meeting of the Arlington I S D Board of Trustees on October eighth, October eighth, two thousand and twenty at five eleven P. M. Due to health and safety concerns related to COVID nineteen coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference, telephone, and in person. At least a quorum of the Board of Trustees will be participating in person, video conference, or telephone in accordance with the provisions of sections five five one point one five two or five five one point one two seven of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the Governor. All our summit trustees and limited staff may be together while maintaining proper social distancing at room three oh one A in the Macburn Professional Development Center. Due to ongoing safety concerns, all open meetings will be live broadcast, but members of the public will be limited in the Macburn Professional Development Center pursuant to state guidelines and regulations, and all persons will be required to comply with state and district guidelines and regulations. Members of this public may access this meeting via I S D website at I I S D dot net. The Board of Trustees on October eighth, two thousand and twenty, beginning at five twelve P. M. will convene in closed session pursuant to sections five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero four eight of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in an open meeting at approximately six fifteen P. M. At this time, I'll reconvene in the open session of this meeting in Arlington and Pitt School District Board of Trustees, October eighth, two thousand and twenty, beginning at seven twenty three P. M. I apologize for the delay. We're, as you can see, a majority of us are meeting in person, so we've had a, some changes and some technology. I'm Bill, and I appreciate the team and all the work they've done to get us to that. So bear with us tonight if we have any hiccups, and we will, we will move forward with our meeting tonight. To start this meeting, we'll start a meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join our Superintendent, Dr. Marcelo Kavassos, in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones, electronic devices, to avoid disruptions. Also, if you do, or on Zoom, please make sure it is on mute at this time unless you're actively speaking. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, the Board. We are going to do a mic check in just a second, and my name's Bowie Hogg. For anyone that doesn't know me, and I will be leading our board meeting tonight as the Board Vice President. Our esteemed President, Ms. Keisha Mays, is, cannot be here tonight due to travel she has to do, so you're stuck with me leading this meeting tonight, so enjoy it the way it goes. So new technology, and I appreciate, like I said before, the staff for all the work of getting us set up and prepared for this meeting tonight to come back in person. At this time, I would ask for a real quick mic check, and I'm going to go around the room. Dr. Reich, if you would, just give me a test, one, two, three into the mic, and I'll look in the back to make sure we have a thumbs up. Board members, please make sure your mics are on. That's always a critical factor.
Test, 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 one, two, three.
Perfect. Mr. Willbanks.
Test, test, one, two, three.
Perfect. Ms. Walton.
Test, one, two, three.
I don't think your mic's picking up. Just a second, Ms. Walton. On the top, Ms. Walton? There you go. Talk.
Tech. Test, one, two, three.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Sounds good. Dr. Kavassos.
Test, one, two, three. Test.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler.
Test, one, two, three. Test.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, and Mr. Chapa on line.
Test, one, two, three.
Mr. Chapa, would you do it again? I can hear you, but it was very faint.
Test, one, two, three.
Much better. Perfect. I think we are good to move forward. If there's a problem, please let me know at any time. The first item on our agenda is program our presentation. We have the distinct honor, even during these pandemic times, to honor amazing, amazing students. So at this time, we choose one student a month to be honored, and our student this month for October two thousand and twenty is the amazing Arlington Collegiate High School student, Micah Akenley. And to present, Mr. Akenley is our esteemed Principal at Arlington Collegiate High School, Mr. Jeff Krieger. Jeff, I see you on the Zoom, so Jeff, take it away and introduce us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Hogg, Board President, Mays, Dr. Kavassos, members of the Board. Appreciate this opportunity today. We'd like to thank the Board first, you know, the opportunity just to recognize one of the many outstanding students we have here at Arlington Collegiate High School. Today, though, we're going to recognize sophomore Micah Akenlay as our Student of the Month for Early College Campus. Micah stands out on our campus by always having a positive can-do attitude. He provides leadership to his classmates both inside and outside of our classrooms. The best compliment I can give him is he makes all of us, students and staff at Arlington Collegiate High School, better. The A C H S faculty describe Micah as positive, warm, encouraging, and the embodiment of an early college high school student. Two hallmark beliefs at Arlington Collegiate High School are despite the adversity and the challenges you'll face, if you give a hundred percent effort and maintain a positive attitude, the success you seek will be realized. Micah exemplifies these beliefs every day, and we're very fortunate to have him as an A C H S student. I feel very fortunate to be his principal, and I, along with the faculty and staff, are looking forward to seeing all the great things he's going to accomplish in his future, in the next three years here with us. So please join me in congratulating Arlington Collegiate High School's Student of the Month, Mr. Micah Akenlay.
Micah, I see you there on the Zoom, and Micah, please, congratulations, for one, for being at an amazing school, Arlington Collegiate High School, and excelling yourself as a, as a sophomore to truly stand out, and Mr. Krieger says you're standout. That means a lot right there. But please, at this time, please give us a few words of advice, because this Board values opinions of our students. You know, just got one today, a couple of phone calls from some students about everything that's going on, so please introduce yourself and tell us, tell us how it's going at Arlington Collegiate High School and any words of advice.
Hello, my name is Micah Akenlay. First, I'd like to thank my teachers and my parents for the opportunities and help that they have given me. I also want to thank you for the chance to come to A C H S and learn a lot and grow as a person. I'd also like to thank you for your time and coming and listening to me. Well, A C H S has really been a learning experience for me because I've really grown as a person because I, I used to not really apply myself, and I came to A C H S, and I've learned several ways to study, become a better student, and become a better friend to everyone around me.
And thank you for the amazing work you do, and, you know, thank you for being a positive light, even during these different times of school from what's happening, but we appreciate students like you still excelling and stepping above, above and beyond, and so congratulations. We will be sending you, usually, we would give you a pen and a plaque and say congratulations, but now we will have the distinct honor of, I think, sending that to your principal and being able to give that to you through there and honor you, and we look forward to the times when we can come out and visit you at Arlington Collegiate High School and say congratulations on behalf of the Board. So, Micah, congratulations. Thank you for being an outstanding student and this distinct honor. We appreciate all you've done, and thank you, Mr. Krieger, for all your work at the high school. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your time, and thank you for recognizing our campus. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you both. We'll move on. Next, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Ausley Junior High and Assistant Principal for Shackelford Junior High.
At this time, do I hear a motion? Dr. Reich.
Move to approve.
Air approval, do I hear a second? I hear, I see a second from Ms. Walton. Any discussion? At this time, we will be taking a board meetings conducted somewhere virtually. We will vote on a roll call vote. Please state your name, vote either yes or in favor, or no, not in favor. I will be going for all night around the Board, just starting from my left and going across and finishing with you, Mr. Chapa, just to stay in order and help keep me in line when we're going. So at this time, please vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes. David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Kavassos, please, please introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Ausley Junior High, Anna Maria Matis, and she attended Texas A and M University for Bachelor of Psychology, A and M University Commerce for Master's Degree in School Counseling. Most recently was an elementary school counselor at Corey Academy, has also been an elementary school counselor and bilingual ESL teacher in Dallas I S D. Congratulations to Anna Maria Matis. Next, the Assistant Principal for Shackelford Junior High, Asia Mitchell, Assistant Principal there, attended University of Texas at Austin for Bachelor of Science in Mid-Level Math and Science Education, Lamar University in Beaumont for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently of an instructional coach in Fort Worth I S D, but has also been a science teacher at Arlington I S D at Nichols Junior High. So congratulations to these two individuals.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos, and we're eventually going to have to have a big reception to meet all these individuals and tackle through this with that. Next, we'll move on and congratulations, and also I noted, see, we hire all. We hire University of Texas and Texas A and M in the same night, so what a great, see, everyone can come together at this time of the country where it's very divided, so the more we can encourage that, the better. Now, they're not working exactly together, but they're on the same team now, so. Next, we'll come to open forum for agenda items. As stated in the plus agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board, regarding an item on this agenda, required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of Schools, Lisa Benjamin, no later than three P. M. the day before the meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board of Agenda Items this evening?
Yes, sir. We have two registered speakers. We have Mr. Ian Pierce and Ms. Wendy Espino.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin, and I will look back in staff, and please let me know when they're on, but in the calling first will be Mr. Ian Pierce. And Mr. Pierce?
If you're ready, I'll give you a little bit of information.
I will do this. Do I see him on there? Mr. Pierce, and let me just read this, and also, Mr. Ms. Espino. This is a routine part of the School Board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. A segment of this meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You'll have five minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Please end your presentation. Mr. Pierce, welcome this evening. Thank you for joining us virtually and your flexibility. I know you've spoken with us before, so I welcome you back. Mr. Pierce, your five minutes begins now.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with the Board tonight. My name is Ian Pierce. I am a teacher at Sam Houston. I am also the T S T A Building Rep for Sam Houston, and like the last meeting, I wanted to kind of talk to or speak about the current situation, about the cleaners being used in our schools. I was very thankful for the memo that Dr. Kavassos and Kelly Orne put out explaining what was in the cleaners that we were using. Unfortunately, it did not really do much to quell my concerns. The biggest thing, problem that I can see is that the cleaner is ineffective. We are using the instructions to sanitize, which means to clean things and to reduce the growth of bacteria. Unfortunately, at the strength that we are using, the concentration and the current dwell times or how long it's wet, it will not kill the SARS-CoV-2 virus. You know, it's not my opinion, that is directly from the manufacturer. It's even printed right on the label, that for us to be able to use that cleaner to actually disinfect and not sanitize, because there is a difference in the chemical world, we've got to have a four hundred and fifty part per million concentration, and it has to stay wet for at least ten minutes. The good news is, is that we have the solution right here in front of us. All we need to do is replace the current cleaners, which is a four hundred and fifty part per million concentration with the, or four hundred and part per million concentration with the stronger concentration, and leave it on desks and surfaces for at least ten minutes. That will kill the SARS-CoV-2 virus, which causes COVID nineteen. And then also, of course, provide our staff with the proper protective equipment. You know, I say this because I'm concerned about my health, the health of my students, the health of my staff member, my fellow coworkers, my administration, and right now I feel like we are kind of doing a little bit of, you know, safety theater. We are giving a false sense of security to everyone involved, that we are sanitized, we are properly disinfecting our desks and protecting ourselves from the SARS-CoV-2 virus, which causes COVID nineteen. This is especially concerning since within the district, there are many teachers that have serious and legitimate health issues that have had alternative work assignments denied, so, you know, I want to make sure that this district is dedicated to keeping its students and staff safe, and as it stands right now, I don't have a whole lot of confidence in that because, you know, this issue has been raised, and we're still using this weaker cleaner that doesn't actually do anything to stop the spread of this virus. I thank you for your time tonight, and you'll have a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, and thank you for your service to our students in this district. Next, we have Ms. Wendy Espino. Wendy, I see you on there. Wendy, your five minutes begins now, if you're ready.
All right, guys, can you hear me? Thank you so much. I wanted to thank all the Board members for your time and consideration and for everything that you do for the kiddos of A I S D. I come to you tonight as a stakeholder in them every sense of the word. I'm a product of A I S D kindergarten through twelfth grade. I'm the parent of three A I S D students. I'm an Arlington resident and homeowner, and I am a teacher in this district. If you'll stay with me, I promise I have a lot of details for you, but we have done so well with the current procedures. I know so much has been put into the cleaning, the protocols that we have in order. We've had students in, at a hybrid model, and things have worked. We followed the CDC guidelines. Things were not ideal, but they are manageable at that point. But we have such a large student population at Workman Junior High. We have fourteen hundred and ninety-five students, and approximately eight hundred of them have chosen to return face-to-face to instruction. So while we have had the hybrid model, which has been manageable, on Tuesday morning, when we return to school, I will have nineteen students with their masks off, eating their breakfast in my classroom, and there is no way that we can possibly socially distance. So I keep hearing this other story on the news that T E A has said that only high schools can continue the hybrid model, and that's what we've been told as well. But there is an elementary school in Dallas, Lakewood Elementary, that due to the high percentage of their student population wanting to return to face-to-face, they have somehow requested and received an exemption from T E A where they are able to operate on a hybrid method continually. They're the only elementary school in D I S D, and they have received an exception from T E A, so I was curious if we have investigated this type of exemption for a school as large as ours, who is looking at approximately eight hundred students being in the building on Tuesday morning? And if we have already investigated this avenue, was there a reason that we did not continue that, or is there a way that we can petition? In the past, we petitioned the Governor for the flexibility in August to continue with our hybrid learning and to gradually ease into it. We petitioned both the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor. So looking at the Tarrant County Public Health Dashboard, none of our levels or thresholds that we've met, have we met yet, and these are ones that we worked together with the Tarrant County Public Health and A I S D to create. So without meeting any of the thresholds, now we're going to double the sizes of the classes we've had in our classrooms for the past two weeks, and that is a severe concern with a lot of teachers. I'm sure this is happening at other schools. I don't have the numbers for other schools, but as I said, I'm wondering how we can see about possibly continuing a hybrid model so that we could keep our numbers manageable and continue the safety protocols that we've been using, and as of right now, we haven't had any cases at Workman. So things have been going well, and I'm wondering how we can continue to keep our staff, which we have many elderly staff members, we have lots of asthmatic staff members, and several pregnant staff members this year, and to keep them safe and our students safe by keeping our numbers manageable. Thank you, guys, for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you for the thoughts, and to Mr. Pierce, thank you for your service to our students in this district. We appreciate it, especially a homegrown teacher like yourself. We appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to action items. First action item is Action A, Consider Notice of Voter Approval Tax Rate Special Election. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and at this time, we bring the notice of voter approval tax rate election for your consideration and your vote.
At this time, all we need on this is a special approval for the special election to be approved. If this time, if someone has a motion, we would accept a motion to accept this.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do I hear a second?
Second. A second.
I saw a second from Dr. Reich first. He beat you right to it, Mr. Willbanks. So we have a motion by Ms. Fowler, a second by Dr. Reich. Any other discussion? I hear a little echo. At this time, we'll move forward with the vote. It is a roll call vote. Please raise your hands and say yes. Dr. Kavassos, sorry, not Dr. Kavassos, you don't get a vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich. Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Chapa. Mr. Chapa, you're on mute.
I read your lips.
I read your lips, but make sure you're off mute. Mr. Chapa, can you vote one more time for us?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Motion approves unanimous approval. Next item, Consider Tasby Local Policy Update One Fifteen. I think we're throwing that to Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and this is the action item for Tasby Policy Update One Fifteen. We have reviewed this with the Governance Committee several times and brought it last board meeting for discussion, and at this time, we're prepared to recommend the Board approve.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos, and we have discussed this in weeks past. At this time, I would throw it over to, I think, Mr. Chapa, leading our committee for any discussion and potentially a motion.
President Hogg, at this time, I'd move that we approve the updates included in Update One Fifteen. This, as you said, was brought previously for consideration by the Board, and we've received no comments or questions in the Governance Committee regarding these policy changes since then.
Motion by Mr. Chapa, do I hear a second? I hear a second from Ms. Walton. Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and to the Governance Committee for your work on this. The initial review of Tasby policies, we know, is a lot of work, so we really appreciate it. At this time, we have a motion and a second. We will vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We have approved Policy Update One Fifteen, and thank you to all the work the entire Board does on reviewing these. Next, we'll move to action item C, Consider Resolution to Cast Votes for the Appointment of a New Board Member to Fill the Vacancy Resulting from the Tarrant Appraisal District Board Recall. It's something we have been talking about for many weeks. We've worked through the process, and now it is a time to officially appoint someone as our representative to the Tarrant County Appraisal Board District. I think that will be thrown over to Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. I move that the Board adopt the following resolution. Whereas Arlington Independent School District is a taxing unit entitled by section six point zero three three of the Texas Property Code to vote to fill the vacancy on Tarrant Appraisal District, also known as TAD, Board of Directors resulting from the recall of Mr. Michael Donnell, and whereas the Chief Appraiser of TAD prepared and delivered the ballot listing the candidates to fill that vacancy, it is therefore resolved that Arlington Independent School District, by and through this resolution of its Board of Trustees, cast its four hundred and fifty votes for Mr. Tony Pompa and enters these votes on the completed ballot that is attached to and made a part of this resolution, and further resolve that a certified copy of this resolution be properly delivered to and filed with the Chief Appraiser of TAD.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
I see a motion by Mr. Willbanks. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, I have a motion by Mr. Willbanks. I will just say, once again, thank Mr. Pompa for being willing to step up. This is not an easy task. Mr. Pompa is a former Board Member that served us very well for numerous years and is a business owner in the Metroplex and also a homeowner in Arlington, so very much appreciated, and I think he will do a great job on the TAD. Any other discussion at this moment? Otherwise, we will vote. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Please raise your hand and say your name. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero, with Ms. Mays not being present. Congratulations to Mr. Pompa. I think that gives him enough votes to guarantee him a spot on that Tarrant Appraisal Board with that. Next, we'll move to action item D, Consider Charge of Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to Oversee the Twenty Nineteen Bond Program. I think I'm throwing that to Ms. Fowler to start, and we're moving through, and there's been through many action items of things we've discussed in weeks past. Ms. Fowler.
Are we going to do the Financial Futures first or Citizens Bond?
We're doing the C B O C, the Bond Committee first, Ms. Fowler.
I move to approve the charge to the Twenty Nineteen Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. Any further discussion to the change in the charge to the Twenty Nineteen C B O C? Not the Twenty Nineteen, I guess the Twenty Twenty for the Twenty Nineteen.
Twenty Nineteen Bond.
Thank you. At this time, we'll vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you. All, motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We have a C B O C, a change in the charge for that. We appreciate the work. Next, we'll move to Consider Authorizing Sale of Property Being Track of Land on Horatio Lynn Survey nine five six. Ms. Walton, I won't read it all, I'll let you go through and read it.
Yes, sir. I move to approve the sale of real property, being that portion of a tract of land located in the Horatio G. Lynn Survey abstract nine fifty-six, City of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, being a tract of land described in a deed to Arlington Independent School District recorded in volume twelve five four seven, page nineteen sixty-six of the deed records of Tarrant County, Texas, and designated as the Portion Tract One, locally known as one oh one West Arbrook, or the southwest corner of the intersection of West Arbrook Boulevard and Center Street in Arlington, Texas, comprising approximately twenty-four point one two two acres. I move we approve.
Thank you, Ms. Walton, and I'm glad you read that and not me. At this time, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I see a second from Dr. Reich. Any further discussion? This time, we'll vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We have authorized the sale. Next, we'll move to Action Item F. Consider Sale of Other Property, and this time, we will let Mr. Willbanks. I think you have a motion.
Yes. I move approval of the Real Property Sale and Resolution approving the sale of delinquent tax property described as 0.384 acres, more or less, with abstract 1376, tract 2J08, David Strickland Survey located in the City of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, also known as 4018 Brandon Road, Arlington, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. And Ms. Walton, you had to read the long one. It's because you're a librarian. A motion by Mr. Willbanks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Walton. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booey Hog, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you. To the board members, motion passes six to zero, unanimous approval. Next, we'll move to Action Item G, Contract Unapproved Property. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, Vice President Hog. At this time, I move to approve amending commercial contract unimproved property for the acquisition of real property being all of Lot 94R-1A Newton Edition, Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Cabinet A, Slide 8376, plat records of Tarrant County, Texas.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Walton still holds the record tonight for the longest.
I'll second that motion.
And I have a second by Mr. Willbanks. Any further discussion? At this time, please vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booey Hog, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six to zero, unanimously approved. Next, we'll move to Discussion Action Item. Something that we've been working on for a while. We'll go to Consider the Schematic Design for CB Berry Elementary School. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hog. And so this evening, we bring the schematic design for Berry Elementary, and it is an exciting time because we're progressing well in our bond implementation and really looking forward to new facilities as our voters approve new facilities in East Arlington to serve our students exceptionally well. And so a lot of work has gone into this, like every schematic design, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Horn to introduce our architects and introduce the design for the new Berry Elementary. So, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Mr. Hall, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos, it's my great honor and privilege to introduce this evening the replacement school, the schematic design for the replacement school for CB Berry Elementary. This was approved as a part of the 2019 bond program. The Berry community will realize a new facility that incorporates state-of-the-art school design, larger and more functional classroom spaces that meet the needs of all students, and more efficient site circulation for student arrival and departure. HKS Architects was approved to provide architectural services for this project. HKS developed the schematic design for the elementary school using district's established educational program and a series of four virtual charrette meetings with central administration, campus administration, and staff, students, parents, and the district's facilities, planning, and construction team. This time, I'm going to introduce the HKS architects and the team that will present the schematic design for board review and approval this evening. With this approval, the CB Berry Elementary School Replacement School Project will be on schedule for substantial completion in the fall of 2023. And so this evening, I'm going to introduce to you, first off, Mr. Leo Gonzalez, who is the leader of the Education Studio Team for HKS, and Mr. Wayne Renaud, who is our project executive. And so Leo, if you would, begin this evening, and let me make sure, Dr. Kavassos, I believe, am I allowed to share at this point? Please pardon me, but I do not have the access to be able to display the presentation at this time. Okay. Pardon me just a moment. Okay. I believe you can see the presentation now. Leo, if you would, please go ahead and begin, and I'll control the slides for us.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Vice President Hog, Dr. Kavassos, members of the board. It is a privilege to be here with you tonight to share the schematic design for Berry Elementary School. Kelly, you can advance. Thanks. Over the summer, as Kelly was sharing, we began work on Berry Elementary School with a series of stakeholder engagement meetings intended to uncover opportunities and define a vision in an inclusive process that included students, parents, faculty, staff, administration, and a whole host of stakeholders. And as we went through that process, we found that there were some key topics that began to rise to the surface and began to define really the direction that we wanted to take as a conceptual direction for this project. And these ideas were community, resilience, wellness, and future. We use these words to really table all of the priorities that we were listening to, and we then took those four words and applied what we know as the Framework for Design Excellence of the AIA. And this is a framework that allows us to ask questions that elevate our design solutions to solve the great challenges of today. So through the work that we are doing and the goals that the stakeholders set, we can design outcomes that we want to measure. Kelly, you can advance to the next page. So the way we do this, you can see the buckets on the left with the four words, with the four overarching concepts, and the goals that each of those concepts encompasses based on the things that we heard and we learned through the stakeholder engagement. And we align those concepts with the different measures: integration, equitable communities, ecology, water, economy, energy, wellness, resources, change, and discovery. And all these allow us to define design outcomes that you will see are guiding the decisions that we made along the way in the design of this project. We wanted to include a couple of shots of our Zoom meetings. This was the first time that we had a stakeholder engagement process via Zoom, so we tried to really make it very interactive. In fact, one of the sessions was bilingual in nature, and we really learned a lot about the communities that Berry Elementary is going to serve in the future. We also took some time to look at the combined attendance zone, that is, an approximate zone at this point, that will include the Berry Elementary Zone and also the Rourke Elementary. We know that this school is going to also host the students that today go to Rourke, and so it was very important that we considered all of the new community in the decision-making process and the setting of the goals and the design of the school. We looked at the site itself, which is the site where Berry Elementary exists today, and we analyzed the different distances that we expect the community to travel to come to school to get a better understanding of whether it is more likely that people walk to school or whether they will be driving to school. We found that a lot of the students, the majority of the students, will be walking to school. We also looked at the immediate vicinity of the school for traffic implications, for circulation patterns, for vehicles and pedestrians, as well as opportunities for the message that the school is going to send to the community as a replacement building on this site, and the opportunities that that will afford the community and the district. We also did a careful environmental analysis to understand what are the passive strategies we can use to design this school in a way that is going to be energy efficient without increasing costs. So careful siting of this project will allow us to maximize the exposure of the north faces and the south faces of this building. That is, those are easier to control sunlight. And we also did an area analysis of the site. So the site today, on the north side, is where the existing building is, if you're all familiar, facing Joyce Street. And then on the south side of the building is a large detention basin, and this was built to detain water that comes onto the site from the south to prevent flooding on the existing school. This meant that the site on the north is what's going to be available to us because we need to keep the detention basin active, and we need to consider that there is a large, a significant drop in elevation from the south to the north, 20 feet change in elevation, which is one of the reasons that the building used to flood. And so we are going to be careful of where we set the finished floor of this building, which is going to be higher than it exists today, and we're going to increase the capacity of the detention basin on the south side of the site. And then we also thought about what are the ideas that we really want to convey with the design of this project? We thought about this idea of a learning journey. The journey as a passage or a progress from one stage to another. And we wanted to really think and ask, you know, what inspires, what does the word journey inspire? You know, is it a road, or is it open fields? Is it nature, or is it technology? Is it the known, or is it the unknown? Is it a destination, or is it the journey? And really, what all this is really trying to say is that the journey really represents a dichotomy, and we think that it is really in the journey where the learning happens. We heard a lot about a school where learning happens everywhere in our stakeholder engagements, and to us, that really meant the journey. That's what's important, and that's what's going to get everybody to their own destination. And so the destination really becomes plural, but the journey, that is what drives this project. So when we started our actual work, we thought about three very different concepts. One was a linear concept, one was a radial concept, one was an axial concept. And these were all ways to analyze the building setup in terms of the program, and we worked with staff to really hone in on those proposals. And we zeroed in on the linear concept being the one that we were going to move forward. And so we started with the program, and if you look at just the basic program, and we assign it as, you know, a corridor with space on either side, and then we thought about creating learning pathways. So we created our rotation in the building, and we assigned different parts of the programs to different elements in the massing. So we split the program in what we call public and private, public being the areas that support the students in their everyday cafeteria, gymnasiums, library, and private being the areas that are the academic areas. And we found this idea, we developed this idea of the learning convergence. So this pivot point where the building shifts as a way to express this idea of the learning journey. So we evolved the learning convergence into this massing model that had the learning journey in the middle, and then we thought about what community plays, what role community plays in this building. So again, we heard about the importance of the community and the relationship that the school has with the community. We learned that in this virtual time, the school has actually grown closer with its community, with its parents, which was really surprising to hear. It was really great to hear. And the school really wanted to embrace this notion and this partnership that they have with the community. So we wanted to introduce this idea that the community has a place in this site. We want to leverage open space and then describe the notion of the learning journey again as the highlight of this project. And so the site begins to lay out in this way, and I'm not sure, Kelly, I am seeing the, your presentation, I'm seeing the three panes, so it's a little bit difficult to read. It's a little bit far away. So I'm going to try and describe the site anyway. Along Joyce Street, we are creating a community area that is essentially intended to be a park-like setting for parents to build community with their neighbors, for students to build community with their peers as they are being dropped off, or as parents are waiting to pick up their children, to really have a space that is inclusive and welcoming and a place that they can use even after hours. We've set up traffic access in similar pattern that exists today, but we've increased the loop to accommodate all of the site queuing onsite, so you will not have traffic queuing on the streets. We've created a east-west direction of the main axis of the building, and then we really have the angle on the northeast allowing the three classroom pods to front the community area and really create a new face on the intersection of Joyce and New York Avenue. And then we are doing some modifications to the detention basin to create a playfield on the south side, so we're increasing the area and allowing for that to also double up as a soccer field, if you will, on the back. Here in the large floor plan, you can see that there are a couple of large buildings on the northwest side of this drawing that we are going to keep. And so we used this largest one of the trees in the, almost in the center of the drawing to create a front court to the building as you come in, you know, as you walk in through the community area, through that community park, really intended to function also as a way to prepare students for learning, right? We know that students carry a lot of anxiety, and we want to address that by allowing them to walk through this park as a way to reduce their levels of anxiety and really get them ready to learn, to leave behind the things that may be worrying them as they come to school and get prepared to learn. At the building entry, the building opens up to receive everybody in this front court that is framing this very beautiful tree, and it's flanked by the library on the left there in the green, and then the administration, sorry, on the right in the green, and the administration wing on the left in the off-white. The entry then having a safety vestibule and a parent room, which again sends a big message of inclusivity to this community, that there is a place for them to come in and participate and collaborate in their students' learning. As you come into the building, if you, just give me a second. The building opens up to the view of the visitor, and you can see all of the opportunities. So there is an outdoor learning area that has a covered area for activities, for art, for the maker space, for the library, for the music room, for the cafeteria, to all happen out on the courtyard. So one of the things we heard was they wanted, the community and the school wanted an outdoor space for learning and for eating and for playing and all these activities, and we were charged to being able to create such a space within our means. And so we've created this courtyard that is flanked by all of these uses, and all of these uses have immediate access to it, and it has high visibility, so it's going to be a very active space. The building then has academic wings on either side with the pre-K and kindergarten on the west side, and then the first, second, and third grade pods on the right side, you can see them there on the diagonal. The second floor lays up in the same way, only on the west side, with the fourth, fifth, and sixth grades on the top of those pods, and then a STEM lab across the hall from there with an open corridor that opens out into that library that is a double-height space. We've done some exploration into the materiality of the building, and we know that the majority of the building will be masonry, and we've taken some care to create a pattern in the masonry by way of modulating the planes of the masonry, pulling some of the masonry in and out to create shadow lines and patterns. And also, we have a pattern that dissolves from bottom to top, again, bringing in this idea of the learning journey, you know, being a foundation, a strong foundation, and then everybody following their own journey into their destination. We have glass with a treatment that is going to help us with some of the, you know, get a lot of visibility from the inside out, but give us a lot of privacy as this building is fronting the street, and then using some metal panel on some accent pieces for the massing of the building. This is the view from an aerial perspective of the building, if you were flying above the building over New York Avenue looking towards the south. And you can see that the library and this idea of this learning journey as a mass is expressing itself on the front of the school. You can see the front court and the main tree that we are saving there in the center of that court, which is also where the drop-off and pickup area is along the drive. But it's also very connected to this community zone with the trees and the park-like setting and the walks that curve around this area that is on the northeast of the building. You can see the three pods on the left, and then as you move to the right is the administration wing in the red, and then you can see the pre-K and kindergarten as you move over to the right. This is a view from the northeast, looking at the three pods. Again, from the air, you can see in the foreground that park that we talk about, that community zone, and then the courtyards, the learning courtyards that exist that we've created between the three pods, the three learning pods, and all of these grades are going to have access to this outdoor learning area. Here is what you would refer to as the back of the building. You can see the playgrounds for the pre-K and the special ed wings over on the left in the foreground. Then you see the courtyard that serves the gymnasium, the art room, the music room, the cafeteria, the maker space, all of that right there in the center, and then over on the right, you can see the playground, the covered playground for the other academic wings, for the other grades. And here's an existing view from Joyce, and we really wanted to show you this because I think you will see it's a very impactful change that this school is going to have on a street presence and on the neighborhood. This is the view of the school from Joyce Street in the future, and you can start to see that we have, you know, closest to us is the pre-K wing, and we've created a pattern of masonry that moves the eye towards the red masonry volume, that is, the administration, keeping a very modern pattern in its rendering, but, you know, changing the color to But, you know, changing the color to bring your eye to the front of the building. You can see the, the glassy area in the center and you can move to the next view, Kelly, it's a little bit closer up. So you can see this administration wing in full control from within those offices of the outside of the building, as well as of the vestibule, security vestibule when visitors come in. And then you can see the library volume, a very dynamic shape, almost like a, like an eye peeking. You're really creating interest and speaking to discovery and curiosity of students. And really putting the library as this center of learning and knowledge. And then in the, in the background, you can see the pods in the beginning of those pods. A little bit more of a close-up look of that front court. And you can start to see the, the park on the left with a little bit of a mound that builds up into the library again to create areas for activity and play areas, for informal play areas for students for before and after school as their parents may be visiting, that they, they can also have a very active environment there in the front of the school. We, we expect this to be a very traveled space. Here's the existing view from New York Avenue. And here is the future view from New York. And you can see the building recedes, so the pods almost move the eye around the corner as this, as this building creates this park that connects New York and Joyce Streets in that corner. And you can see that it is very accessible to us as parents come across New York. They can walk into, into the site and the building really receives them. We've taken the fence off of this portion of the site. So the fence only occurs from the building back. But in the front of the school, we're really opening up and creating a community zone. And here is another perspective from Joyce Street. This is a little bit further, further up the street, approximating the, the corner. And you can start to see that the library peaks there, begins to show up and, and it's proud of the building. And then you can see the rest of the building in the, in the background. But again, this foreground of the park-like setting with the trees. And here is the view today from the intersection of New York and Joyce. And here is the future. And really you can see the three pods with the courtyards that are, you know, safe outdoor spaces that the students can learn in, but are visually connected to the community. And this is the community space in the foreground. A close-up of the architecture of the pods. So really trying to introduce a little bit of playfulness through the use of a color palette that varies in tones. We want to make sure that we are creating an architecture that is timeless. And we've taken great care to, to do that in our selection of, of how we use color sparingly and in a way that doesn't really highlight a trend. And then we're bringing some of the materiality with the use of the metal screens on the corner of the building with the angles to bring the language around the end and again, activate a little bit more the architecture. Here's that view again of the learning courtyards in between the pods. And Kelly, if you can go to the next view, this is a little bit more of a close-up. And you can see we've really taken a lot of care into designing the experiences that happen in the courtyard because it is so important that those spaces actually get used. And the only way to do that is to design the use. So we've created in the foreground, an area that is covered with a trellis and that has blackboards, outdoor chalkboards, if you will, for formal class experiences. But we also have the opportunity to create gardens. We have a, a water table and then an experiment table in the back. The next page has some photographs of what those, those experiences might look like. So obviously some planner beds, but you know, this water table that really brings water into the learning experience, which is such an important part of growing up and having access to, to that resource is, is part of, an important part of learning. And then a formal area for teachers to set up outdoor learning activities. And so that brings us to the end. And just again, wanted to thank members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, for the opportunities afforded to us to work on this very exciting project. And I want to open it to any questions.
Thank, let me check. Thank you, Leo, and you guys continually seek to impress us. It's a, listen, we've all seen Berry Elementary for a really long time. And it's hard to picture not the old-school being there. I think all of us have been around, but what a creative use of a space of this land to give the neighborhood a really community era in a school that has a outstanding look. But that's just my opinion right now, I don't know what my colleagues think. But watching how people are acknowledging, I think everyone's pretty impressive at school. At this time, do we have questions from colleagues? Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and thank you to the team, Kelly, and the team at HKS and Leonardo. Like Mr. Hogg, I was really impressed. We reviewed this on the Berry Committee. And we've had two strong designs now with, that have come through the, our committees for elementary schools. And this was, both, both of them were equally as impressive. I love, first of all, I want to say, I love the fact that you, your sense of community, I think, is very important, especially for that East Arlington neighborhood. And the way you designed the use for community into the building is phenomenal with the park-like setting on that, what, would that be in the northeast corner? And then another big thing for me is I'm a big fan of outdoor learning spaces. But oftentimes, you're right, I believe you mentioned it, a lot of times they go unused, unless you purposely designed them for use. And you guys have gone above and beyond there for that. Just again, as my colleague, Mr. Hogg, said, you guys have really done a great job of repurposing this space and taking an ugly, boring retention pond and, and provided utility for it. Not just for its main use of preventing flooding, but providing a great space for kids to play soccer and also give it another outdoor space for that community that really needs it. So again, kudos to you guys, I really think, thank and appreciate all the work that went into it. Even from your colleague, all the way down in Argentina, I wish I could have shared a mate with her while we were on our Zoom call. I miss Argentina, it's a lovely country. I, I've bored my colleagues many times with my tells from Argentina. But again, the whole team, thank you for your design.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. And you've never bored me with Argentina stories, it makes me want to go to Argentina, especially mentioning whatever you were to eat or drink out there, it sounds wonderful. Just, it could be terrible, but it sounds good the way you say it. So Ms., Ms. Walton.
Mr. Hogg, I just want to commend the committee and the architects for being so careful to save the existing trees. I know the, the one that's going to be the focal point right there in front, almost, we almost lost it when they built the, the kindergarten or pre-K pod. But it was able to be worked into the design. So it's been there a while and I think it's going to be beautiful where they have located it. It's really going to add some shade and, as Leo said, some tranquility to the entrance. So thank you for that, and great job, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and I, I agree. HKS did a great job saving trees at our Fine Arts and Athletic Center. And they were very adamant about it. And when you walk around that facility now, you see the importance of that, of what it really does to change that property. So I appreciate the guys at HKS thinking that through. I don't see any other questions. I did want to ask a question on the very last slide, on slide forty-three. I love the community area and the design. And Leo and team and Mr. Horn, you know, I always worry, and y'all know I'm going to ask about fencing, because I ask about fencing a lot. The fencing around the playfield, the detention center, the detention center, detention pond, apologize for that. The detention pond, I feel like it should be, nevermind, retention. It would make me not make that mistake. As you go around the playfield, I fully agree with the fence there. On the community area, when you look at most of our parks in the city, they don't have a full, and I know we're going with mostly vinyl fence on there. They don't have, and most of our parks in the city don't have the full vinyl fence. They either have some type of smaller wood fence with multiple entry points. Will that community area have multiple entry points? And what kind of fence are we putting around that front area that is open to the community to come in and utilize?
So I, I think I understood, I understood the question. You were a little muffled, but I'm going to repeat it just to be sure. You're, you're asking how many entry points, entry points will be available to the community park that we've created on the northeast corner?
Okay, and Leo, I was asking how many, if there's enough entry points. And also, is the use of the, of the vinyl link fence around the community area a critical area? Or is that, do you change the fencing and do an alternative type of fencing? And not, or maybe not even fence that entire area around the, that, I guess that would be the northwest to, down to the detention pond along that community area. So the northwest corner going along the western side right there is probably the area that I'd ask about.
So on the, on the community area, along the front north and northeast, there will be no fence at all. So that will be all open. Then that community area starts getting smaller as it approximates the, the western side of the site. And that is where we have the drives and some of the parking. And so that area is not necessarily rendered as a park-like setting on that side, except for the very beginning on the north along, along New York, sorry, along Joyce. The fencing actually then occurs from the building back towards the south around the, what is the detention pond, and that will be the playfield, so that it excludes the parking from that. So there, it's a safe passage for students during the day to go from the play areas and from the courtyards over to the soccer field without crossing streets or, or being in any kind of danger. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I, I really appreciate that. I think it, it says a lot, because if you look at slide forty-three, it definitely shows a fence all the way around. And Leo, I think your answer of no fence along that northwest community area, I think, is a great piece. Because I think you guys have put a lot of time and energy into it. And sometimes I don't want that fence taken away from what I know y'all have done. And Ms. Walton pointed out, saving those, saving the trees in the park-like environment right there to really enhance. Because no matter what kind of fence sometimes you put up, it collects trash and dirt and, and some of those type of things. So you answered it perfectly. And I, I think, I just always want to make sure you've taken that into account. And it sounds very thoughtfully taking that account. So I truly appreciate that answer, and I think it's a great answer. At this time, I don't see any other comments from board members. So at this time, I'd be more than willing to entertain a motion from one of my colleagues. I see a motion by Dr. Reich.
A second.
And I see a second from Ms., Mr. Wilbanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Dr. Reich.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you, thank you to my colleagues, six colleagues voting the affirmative unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Horn and your team, and also to the HKS team. You guys step up and above and beyond each time. And the only thing bad about this is it's going to take till the fall of twenty twenty-three to be built. But, you know, patience was never our strong suit, or my strong suit at least. So I appreciate that to the team, and I thank you for all the staff's work, because we have so many other things going on, but we still have to commence our business as we normally do. We'll move to the next item. Next item is consider appointments to the Financial Futures Committee. Ms., I think I'm throwing it, it's Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the following individuals that have been contacted. And just for some reference, these are, it's a very important group because they are community stakeholders. And, and we need them to, to work with us, to look at budgets and long-range financial planning. So these members are very important. And they have been contacted. And then I look forward to a time when we can meet together either in person or Zoom for the Financial Futures Committee. So I move to appoint these individuals that have been notified already.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, and thank you for chairing the Community Engagement Committee that served a lot of this work. I have a motion, do I hear a second from one of my colleagues?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second by Ms. Walton. Any further discussion to appoint the individuals as discussed to the Financial Futures Committee? Seeing none, we'll vote. Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Thank you to my colleagues, passes six-zero. Thank you to the members that are serving on this committee. This is, as we know, one of the most valuable committees we have in this district to help us get more community feedback and help us look at long-term planning on the financial side of this. So it is a commitment from our community members, and I thank them for all the work on this. Next, we'll move to consider House Bill Three implementation, early childhood and CCMR board adopted goals. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And as you know, and we've discussed in the spring, this was pre-COVID in the spring. One of the House Bill Three requirements is that the board review and adopt goals related to early childhood and CCMR. It's a new requirement from House Bill Three. It is state-driven that the board engage in these goals and adopt them. And then also have a reporting mechanism that we'll discuss as well tonight. So our staff, and led by Dr. Wertz, has taken time to review our data, to understand, make sure that the goals that we're bringing are reasonable, but also what we would consider stretch goals. So we bring this for your discussion. Again, it's something new from HB Three. And, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz to give us an overview and discuss the goals for board consideration.
All right, good evening, Vice President Hogg, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, thank you for having me here this evening. As Dr. Cavassos indicated earlier, this is a presentation specifically about House Bill Three to discuss our early childhood literacy and math plans, as well as some plans and goals related to college career and military readiness. To start off, I thought I would just provide a brief overview of the House Bill and specifically the parts of the bill that are directly connected to the portion that we're going to be talking about tonight. There are four sections in House Bill Three. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the goals that are related to the portion that's connected to learning and improving student outcomes. And these proving, these areas on learning and improving student outcomes that we're going to talk about today are specifically related to early childhood literacy and mathematics. There is a requirement in House Bill Three that requires boards to adopt and monitor students' achievement in early childhood literacy and mathematics, and also to ensure that we have a systematic phonics curriculum that's in place. And so we're going to talk about that this evening. We're also going to talk about the requirement connected to goals the board is required to adopt to monitor students' readiness in terms of college career and military. So these goals are actually part of an initial plan that the state put out called Generation Texas, which basically is known as the sixty-by-thirty Texas Plan. And this plan are, this plan has a target that sixty percent of Texan citizens will have a post-secondary credential or a degree by the year 2030. And TEA's response to this is that sixty percent of our students would meet proficiency standards as they are assessed on STAR. And because there's such strong research connecting third-grade reading and achievement in third-grade reading to students' success in, in high school and graduation, they have set their targets specifically in House Bill Three around early childhood reading, targeting the third grade. The other portion of this goal is really not only to ensure that students have proficient levels in terms of their reading, but also that when they move into a post-secondary environment, there's no need for remedies. And so this actually comes about in three different ways in terms of goals. It's monitoring our students' acquisition of workforce certifications while in high school, enrolling in a post-secondary education or a higher education institution following graduation, and/or enlisting in one of the branches of the US military. So when we're setting our goals related to these topics, the one thing that I wanted to mention is that it's important that we not only measure the outcomes that happens in the grade levels, but also that we understand what's happening in terms of our student achievement as they matriculate from grade level to grade level in the primary grades that lead up to that. And as we do that, we really think about it from the continuous improvement standpoint, which is to establish our targets based upon our root cause analysis. And then to identify meaningful processes, or what we would call strategies, that we know are directly correlated to the challenge that students are experiencing. to the challenge that students are experiencing, so that we can try to affect their, improve their achievement for better. And once we put these strategies in place, then we find ways to measure two things in, in these strategies. One is the implementation, meaning are these strategies being implemented in the classroom with fidelity? And two, if they are being implemented with fidelity, what impact are they actually having on student achievement that's related to our performance objective? And that cycle goes around and around, in that once we measure the impact, then we make a decision about whether the strategy is working or not working as we intended, if we need to make some adjustments in terms of training, or find a new strategy altogether. The goals I'm about to share with you this evening are written at the district level, and House Bill Three requires that we set goal targets over a five-year period, where we set the date in which we expect to reach those targets, and each of the individual targets for all subgroups of students that are, have twenty-five students or more. What I wanted to articulate is another portion of the House Bill Three requirements are that each campus also have these goals. And so one of the things that we worked really hard to make sure that we do is that we did not set target goals at the district level that, in fact, did not cascade down to the campuses. So what you will see is, I'm going to be sharing with you the goals at the district level, but behind each of those targets are actually targets for each of the individual campuses related to that goal. And if you were to add up all of the different objectives or goals that are at each of these campuses, they would actually fall to what we have at the district level, or mean, they would add up to what we, what we have at the district level in terms of the goal. The other thing that I think is important to note about the goals that you're about to see is, there were several things that were taken into consideration. One is where the schools were in terms of their achievement related to third-grade reading and math and CCMR, and also the demographic of the students that are being taught at the schools. So we know that the research says that the number-one indicator, or the one demographic in terms of student populations that has the strongest impact on learning is socioeconomic status. And so schools with high, high levels of students who are on free and reduced lunch, that was taken into consideration, as we know that those schools tend to come with different challenges than schools that are more, from more affluent areas. So the first part I want to go over is the literacy plan, and these are the targets that you can see. The reason why it says October is, our goal each year is to report back to the board in October where we are in terms of our achievement, and we will bring forward the data that share, shows you how we're, how we're progressing towards our targets and where we're making gains, and if we're struggling in the areas where, where we are and where we believe the, the root causes to be. You'll notice on this graphic that we have a baseline, which was actually typically, it would have been established last spring, but because we have no STAR results from the prior school year, this seventy percent mark is actually from the year of 2019. And so what you'll see is, over the next five years, we have targets to move a ten percent increase, and the amount of increase is indicated at the, at each year. So this top column here represents all students, and then if you break down into each of the individual subgroups, you'll see where their targets are moving. The important thing to note is that the accountability around House Bill Three is directly connected to student populations or student groups that have at least twenty-five students or more. If they have under twenty-five students, they're not included in this. However, in our, in our system, we went ahead and articulated goals for some of our smaller subgroups, such as Indian or Pacific Islander, because they do feed into this all number, which we have here at the top. So how do we intend to make a difference in the way our students are achieving in reading? The team has worked really hard, and I have to express my appreciation to Barry Fox and Connie Wallace and all of her team for their hard work in terms of putting together a comprehensive literacy plan. You're also going to see the, the cover of the comprehensive mathematics plan. The reason why it says draft is because we have a few fine-tuned things we need to add to it, and then we're going to be publishing these all online by the end of the month, along with all of the targets and goals, once they are adopted, should you choose to do that. In these comprehensive plans, there are many things that are articulated, so I put a copy of the table of context, contents on, on the screen, including our mission and vision, our philosophy, and specifically what we believe around reading and writing. We also dive into our model around balanced literacy, the elements of what we believe are parts of effective literacy instruction, what various roles play in the instruction of literacy at the schools. And then we specifically talk about what this model, this balanced literacy model, how it can be actually applied in the schools in terms of a schedule, and the, the specific instructional strategies that we intend to continue to train and support our teachers as they implement those in the classroom. This school year, our strategies are those that are listed right here. These will also be embedded in our district improvement plan, which I'll be bringing to you here in the next few weeks. But our first strategy is the big five plus one with a focus on phonics. As we looked at our primary grade data over the last several years, one of the things that we've noticed was a continual challenge for our students was phonemic awareness and phonics. In other words, many of our students still struggle with, with letter sound identification and understanding how to manipulate the sounds in order to form words and, and to read. And so our area focused this school year is specifically around training and supportive teachers around their instruction in phonics and the, the phonics of curriculum that we have purchased and placed in the classrooms. The big five are the ones listed, and we also include writing, because we know that reading and writing are deeply connected to each other. We'll also be providing support and training around implementation of guided reading in the classroom. We know that guided reading has a direct effect on students' comprehension of their reading. It also works to increase their vocabulary and their ability to have more automaticity and text fluency as they're reading. We will be providing coaching to our staff in, in the classroom around the best practices that we know are connected to literacy instruction. And then, of course, as you know, as part of House Bill Three, we have teachers that are participating in the Reading Academy, which is specifically focused on the science of teaching reading. I thought I would share with you just briefly what we mean when we say phonological awareness or phonics or guided reading, because those are being called out in the presentation. I won't spend time reading all the details of these slides, but you'll get a basic understanding about what are the specific things that we're asking teachers to do, and what, if the teachers are implementing these practices, what we can expect students to be able to do. These practices, along with all the others, are articulated in the actual comprehensive literacy plan. So the actual, the screen that you see in front of you are, are actual capture images from, captured images from the actual plan that you'll see posted. But here, for example, on phonological awareness, we will be working so that students can develop relationships between letters and sounds, so they can make meaning when they're reading and writing, practice those relationships between letters and sounds, syllables and words, and apply those skills in a way that allows them to manipulate them in their, in their, while they're developing in their literacy skills. Other areas of focus that you can see are phonics, which is specifically about looking for common word patterns and understanding the relationship between the letters and the sounds. And then, of course, guided reading, which is designed to help increase comprehension and, and text fluency. These are the twelve best practices that we adopt in Arlington. All of our instructional efforts are really around helping teachers to master these twelve best practices. What you don't see on the screen per se is the, the rubrics attached to the best practice. So each best practice, there are articulated levels of proficiency on what teachers should be doing and what students should be doing when these best practices are placed and are being implemented with fidelity in the classroom. Those that are starred tonight are actually those that are directly related to the literacy instruction that we're holding up in support of our teachers as we're working through the implementation of this literacy plan. An example of the way this would work is if a teacher is focused on implementing practices connected to phonics or word study, one of the best practices, which you can see right here, is standards alignment. If you were to take that best practice and then apply it to word study or phonics, here would be the growth indicators that we would be coaching and working with teachers on as they work towards improving their practice. Our goal, of course, with teachers is that we, we get to what we call synergistic culture, which is right here, level three, and then, of course, strive to help people to develop, or teachers to develop the skills that are, are right around the innovative culture. But each of these rubrics connected to our best practices are actually found in our plan, and all, all the training that we do in terms of working with teachers and coaching them are focused around helping teachers to earn these badges, which are around the best practices. So how do we measure progress of our grade levels as they're moving towards this target in third grade that we have established? Well, we do this by using various screeners and formative assessments. So the first one, we begin with this pre-K, and in pre-K, we, we will assess all of our students three times a year using Circle, which is a progress monitoring system. And there are two ways that students are assessed. One is directly through a program that students engage in, which we call direct assessments, and they're assessed in the, in the components that you see on the screen in front of you, including rapid letter naming, rapid vocabulary, book print awareness, letter sound correspondence, and a few other things. And then there's also what we call observation-based assessments, where we measure how students are developing socially and emotionally as they prepare for kindergarten, how is their speech progressing, and their, their skills in forming sentences, early writing, physical health. And so these components are all part of the pre-K assessments that, like I said, that we administer three times a year to ensure that our students are progressing adequately in preparation for kindergarten. In kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, right now, we are using iStation, and we have set goals specifically around iStation. Now, one thing that I wanted to mention is the istation is no longer on the commissioner's list that we'll be using. So we will be transitioning next year to a new platform, excuse me, through M-Class, but we received a waiver this year from TA to maintain our same system in order to alleviate some of the burden that adding a new component to learning might be to teachers in this environment. But on the screen, which you can see in front of you, are the specific subtests that are part of iStation. And what we've worked hard to do is to develop cut points in istation that would allow us to predict how a student is progressing towards third grade. So, for example, when a student participates this year for, in kindergarten with istation, we will be measuring their, their skills around listening comprehension, phonemic awareness, letter knowledge, and vocabulary, and they will receive a score that kind of lets us know where they fall in the continuum. And that score, Dr. Barlow's team has worked hard to equate that score towards a predicted value that's connected to approaching, meets, or masters STAR outcomes in third grade. So if a student receives a certain score that we would call approaching in kindergarten, what we will be able to know then is, if nothing changes for that student, then we would anticipate that that's probably where they would land in third grade, in the approaching area. And the correlation, it's about the, the relationship or the predictability is about a seventy-five percent predictability, around between seventy-five and eighty percent predictability on these areas. The one thing that we also are working on is providing a dashboard that will allow principals and teachers to know specifically what percentage of their school or which percentage of their class is actually struggling on which component. So I could look at my results, for example, in my first-grade classroom, or across my school as a principal, and I would be able to know what percentage of my students are struggling in which, which area, whether it's vocabulary, phonemic awareness. That way, we can apply the right training and strategies to shore up where the kids' struggles are. One of the biggest misperceptions that we, we have in education sometimes, or one of the things we see often when we're creating improvement plans, is that we recognize there's a reading problem, and then we kind of throw the reading darts out and hope that the, the improvement happens. But what we're trying to move is to something much more prescriptive, which is to try to understand what we believe the problem is, and then apply the prescription that we know is connected to the diagnosis. And the, the way we're kind of equating it is very similar to like when we go to the doctor, when we, when we have an illness, we go to the doctor. The doctor will draw our blood to try to diagnose us, and then they, once a diagnosis is made, they provide a prescription that science has said, if you take and you follow the prescription, you should improve. And then you go off and you, you use the prescription, and then you come back a few months later, and they draw your blood again and see how you're doing. And if you're not doing well, the first question the doctor's going to ask is, did you do the prescription as prescribed? And if the answer is no, you're going to start there. But if the answer is yes, then, then the next question is maybe that's, that's the wrong strategy, we have to try something new. Well, education, while it's a little more complex than that, in that we have, you know, people that we're dealing with that, and the way, the reason why kids learn or don't learn, there's lots of reasons behind it. There is some knowledge in research that actually helps us know what effect size certain strategies will have. So, for example, if phonemic awareness is your challenge, guided reading is not going to solve that problem for you. You're going to need to do work around word study. Phonemic awareness is not going to be solved in, in guided reading, which is focused on comprehension, for example. So what we're working on is trying to provide teachers with a well-rounded education and training around balanced literacy, so that they can not only diagnose the needs of their students using the screener, but then apply the right prescription to help those kids move. Another way that we'll do that is through our CAs and our benchmarks. These will help us understand how students are progressing in the current curriculum towards STAR exam, and then, of course, we will assess all of our third-grade students in STAR. In mathematics, our, our, our goals are right here in front of you, very similar, looking for a ten-point gain. They're broken down exactly the same, where we will come back in October, we have a baseline from 2019, and we'll progress over the next five years and share with you our progress as we're moving within each of the subgroups. And, of course, these same goals, very similar like this, will be provided for each of the schools based on their current targets and their, their, their student demographics. Our math, our comprehensive math plan will also be published online, and here you can see a table of contents that are specifically around our instructional framework when it comes to mathematics, what it looks like in elementary, what it looks like in secondary. And then, of course, we've linked these things to our learner framework, which is active learning cycle and the twelve best practices that are aligned to the, the research-based instructional strategies and approaches in mathematics that we know actually produce strong mathematicians. I wanted to share with you an example of the strategies connected to our plan for this year. So what you will see inside our comprehensive math plan is you'll see some examples of what teachers will learn and what students will learn. And this year, we're focusing specifically on training. There'll be several training opportunities, but embedded in those training opportunities, we're focusing around the use of manipulatives and tools, and also multiple representations. So I want to, I want to just reemphasize to everybody that when we talk about the plan tonight, we're really focusing on early childhood and mathematics. So some of the examples that you'll see teachers working on is implementing tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving, and helping to use and connect mathematical representations. And for students, it's helping them to learn how to select tools and real objects, and use those objects to help them problem solve. We also want to help them communicate mathematical ideas and use a variety of representations to, to solve their, their problems. You know, oftentimes, when we were younger, we would, I don't know how it was for all of you, but when I was younger and I went to school, oftentimes, our teachers would teach us a very specific way to solve a problem. What we really want to help students to do now is to really understand what's actually being asked in a mathematical problem, to problem solve, and to recognize and, and know that they can actually represent a solution in a variety of ways, and there's not only one way to solve a problem. Couple other ways that we will monitor their progress in math is through some screeners. So we have, we have a screener called Math Inventory. We administer this to students three times annually, and you can see there are five specific areas that we screen for, for students to get a quantile level, number and operations, algebraic thinking, patterns, and proportional reasoning. We also measure geometry and measurement and data, the use of data, statistics and probability, and of course, expressions, equations, and algebraic functions. And then we also provide what we call a diagnostic tool called Imagine Math, and this is actually at the, inside the classroom. And what it allows teachers to do is to provide students with an opportunity to have their specific needs diagnosed, so that they can engage in a program that uses almost artificial intelligence to, or predictive intelligence to generate lessons that will accommodate where the kids specifically are. So a student will take an assessment, they'll have an opportunity to engage in questions and problems on a platform, and then it will customize the lessons for the students based on their individual needs. The, the data that's actually generated out of Imagine Math will allow teachers to guide some of their decisions that they're making in terms of the classroom instruction they're providing students, and it will give supplemental interventions to students who are struggling in specific areas in math concepts. In math, of course, we will continue to also do CAs and benchmarks, and then ultimately we'll assess our students' readiness towards meeting the STAR standard. And finally, the last portion of our plan today that I want to share with you is around college career and military readiness. As you know, CCMRs, there's a variety of indicators. The accountability system does not require that every student have multiple indicators or points around college and career and military readiness. It simply says that a student must earn one point at least during their time in high school. And there's a variety of ways that we can do it. In order to set targets around CCMR in Arlington... In order to set targets around CCMR in Arlington, what we did is we looked at what are um, the opportunities of all those indicators that we believe we have the greatest uh, chance of impacting the majority of students. And so we focused our efforts around a few areas, and you're, I'm gonna talk about those tonight, specifically Advanced Academics, some of our workforce um, certs, and then, of course, TSI. So our goals are listed here. Um, the baseline goal will tell you where we are as a system as of two thousand nineteen, meaning the percentage of students who have earned an indicator um, prior to graduation. And then, of course, we want to improve our points um, over the course of the next five years. Our strategies are focused um, first around CTE. And what we really wanna do is we want to provide our, our students who are engaged in workforce certification courses to have formative assessment tools to help guide them as to, in terms of what skills they need to shore up to actually pass their workforce certs. Um, we don't have a specific drop day where all students sit for their workforce certification exams like we do STAR. Um, they kind of happen um, progressively over the course of the year. And so what the CTE department has worked to do is to develop a some formative assessment tools, or to provide formative assessment tools to teachers that students can use to kind of progress monitor along the way in terms of readiness to sit for the exam. Um, these progress monitoring tools are aligned to the assessment timelines, and then they are specifically designed to make sure that whatever industry the student is trying to sit for in terms of these industry exam, that they would receive the adequate preparation for it. Um, we will monitor as a system how students are achieving on these formative assessments to see if we need to make any additional adjustments um, to ensure that kids are actually prepped when they're ready to sit for those exams. Students who earn a workforce exam um, cert that's listed on the list from TEA, they have specific um, workforce certs that count towards CCMR, um, will receive credit for that. Another area specifically around Advanced Academics, uh, we are, we have some goals around ensuring not only do our students enroll in AP and IB and dual credit, but that they're prepped to sit for the exam. Um, you may remember, uh, we have spent a lot of time or last several years working with equal opportunity schools to try to recruit and identify underrepresented student populations into our AB and IB and dual credit programming. Um, that's been successful. And our goal is not only just enrolling students into these programs, but helping them to persist and pass. Sometimes we have students um, that want to unenroll when it's their first um, time enrolling in an AP course. And so we've been working to try to keep them enrolled. And then, once you're enrolled, um, to pass the exam at the end of the year so that you can earn college credit. We also want our students to be able to participate in dual credit opportunities. And one of the ways we've done that is to become a TSI testing site. So we have students um, who used to have to go to Tarrant County College, for example, to sit for a TSI exam, um, to take courses at Tarrant County College. And so in order to increase access to all of our students, we have adopted, um, we have become person, testing sites at each of our high schools so that our students don't have to go anywhere. We will provide the exam um, to them, uh, and then they, one, if they qualify or they do well in the exam and pass, they can um, begin taking courses at Tarrant County College. And then finally, the same thing with ACT. We are initiating a, a ACT um, school day. Um, rather than having students uh, have to go somewhere to take their ACT exam, uh, we will actually be offering ACT directly at the high schools. In fact, this year, it'll be happening on October twentieth. So what we will do to progress measure around these is, um, of course, look at how our kids are doing academically as they're progressing through their AP and IB and dual credit coursework. Um, we have been working to identify prep resources that allow students to prep for AP exams. One example that we piloted last year is UWorld, which is a, um, which is an online platform that allows students to um, practice and have access to uh, practice material uh, aligned to college boards' material to um, sit for the, to prep, to sit for their exam and to actually uh, earn a score that would transfer to college credit. And then, of course, we're gonna continue to monitor our participation rates. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we've been working with uh, equal opportunity schools to ensure that the number of students that are actually engaging in Advanced Academics is increasing, and uh, we'll continue to monitor that and, and um, and implement those strategies. So as I mentioned earlier, what we will do is we will provide each October an update on how we're doing with the goals and our progress measures to the board. Um, our reports that we will intend to bring back, like, starting next year in October, would be um, our outcome goal and progress of any data that shows how we've been doing in terms of our previous reporting periods, um, how we're currently doing, and um, how we are projecting towards our five-year deadline targets. And then, of course, um, any assessment um, from Dr. Cavassos or the team around how the district is performing as a whole, and how campuses are performing in, in relationship to these targets. And so our recommendation is that the board adopt the proposed early childhood literacy, mathematics, and CCMR goals, plans, and our monitoring calendar. Any questions?
Dr. Wertz, I, let me go to questions, but outstanding presentation. Thank you for the details. Let me look at my colleagues and ask any questions uh, for our outstanding Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Wertz.
Hey, Dr. Wertz, let me ask one on the career, I'm sorry, the college career CCMR. I know TEA came out with some different ways where we can get the military recognition. We're not still not getting access to the military database. So we may have students that enroll, and we can't even officially track them. What's our risk and concern of students that aren't getting that now, that we don't think we'll get that data? Do we think that's gonna be a vulnerable spot for us? Maybe is the question I'd ask here.
That's a really good question, and we're in the process of evaluating that right now. Um, it's a little challenging, only because normally the records that you would need to know to answer that question, we typically not had access to. And so we're going to have to work with our military recruiters to identify specifically students who had either recruit, been recruited into um, uh, or enlisted, or those that have passed, for example, the ASVAB and made an intention to, to um, in, to enlist. And the new deadline actually to identify those students, or to ensure that they actually do that, is by December thirty-first. And so we're trying to inquire um, what that actually means, because typically our deadline is, for example, um, in the past, it's always been the end of October. Um, it's hard to know exactly what impact it's gonna have, because as I mentioned, every student has to have at least one indicator. That's the goal um, for CCMR. Uh, what we currently have in our system by high school is we have a list of every student, um, starting when they're freshmen, and we track their progress to see um, if they've earned at least one indicator for CCMR. That way, when their counselors are meeting with them, they'll be able to identify if there are any courses or opportunities that we wanna help students take advantage of that they may have missed. But it is possible that students who, for example, enlisted in the military, or, or in the past, who had said they were interested in, in um, in, in listing the military, had other indicators. So if the military enlistment children, didn't happen, and we took that off the list, but they had another indicator, they would be kept whole, and it would, it would not impact accountability in a negative way. But if that was their only indicator, and then it goes away, meaning they didn't pass the ASVAB, or they in fact did not enlist uh, or meet uh, of their own accord with a military recruiter, um, then they would have no indicator, which could impact it. So we're in the process of evaluating it. We just received word um, from TEA on Monday. And so now, now our task is to kind of go through um, the system to see what the impact would be. The one more caveat, just to answer your question that I think is important to note, is um, CCMR is one portion of the overall rating in the district, but specifically also high schools. The other portion are, a part of their portions, is not only their graduation rate, but also their um, their STAR scores. We had no STAR last year. And so um, this, the, the, it's important to know that the, the CCMRs that we're talking about now are actually last year's graduate, graduates, but CCMR always runs a year behind. So the C's, if we take STAR this year, which we still don't know exactly how that's gonna work, 'cause half our kids are at home. But if we take STAR this year, it's those STAR scores plus last year's graduate CCMR points that actually um, feed into our, our actual rating. So we're still investigating, but it's, it's, it's a little complicated.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. And I think you've just made the point statement that no accountability should be strictly off of a, a standardized test. And you see the impact that it has. And listen, we're tracking third grade reading scores constantly, but it shouldn't be the sole basis for elementary um, accountability, which is what's happened. So, you know, almost on the career, military readiness, you could just track a mom or dad's Facebook page and see if their kid gets their haircut, or they're gone for a little bit. That's probably the other way. Doctor, yeah, please, Dr. Vassos.
So, uh, just to put this in context, um, we're talking about the seniors of two thousand twenty. They've already graduated. We've already coded it. Where we're operating under certain rules that we, as a district, Dr. Barlow is on these committees, and we, as a district, have asked for clarifications. Make sure we're coding CCMR military correctly. And Monday, the rules changed. And what TA has tried to do is get the, the data from the military, and then apply it to uh, CCMR for every district. They were not successful in that. And therefore, the, the task becomes the districts. And the rules changed. Students have already graduated, and, and now we have gotten an extension to code students, but that doesn't change the fact that the rules are changing in the middle of the game. And it's been their intent, and they've said it publicly, not to change the rules so often. And what Dr. Wertz mentioned is accurate. CCMR is a large part of the accountability for high schools, a portion, proportionally large, and large for our district. So a change in the middle of the game, if you will, uh, is significant. And then the, the rules by which we have to then vet things out um, have also changed. And so just, just for clarity, that, that, that is problematic for districts and, uh, and could have a, an effect in high school ratings, quite frankly, because we operate into certain rules, and now the rules changed.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. I think it just confirms we need to, on our legislative agenda, um, we pushed in the last session to get some data points changed in the legislature, and it was successful. And this is another one of those areas. I know we'll talk about that a little later. Dr. Raish.
Thank you, President Hogg, Vice President Hogg. Uh, yeah, these uh, well, first off, I, I guess I, I will say thank you, Dr. Wertz. Uh, a- as I've said in the past, the, the intelligent approach is, it, it's, it's really impressive. It, it really, really is. A- a- along those lines of how we continually advocate to adjust things that just don't make sense in reality, um, I, I wanted to ask regarding the reading academies for the teachers. All of this was the SHB three. All of this was pre-COVID. And i- is there any, any possibility to adjust the calendar of implementation uh, for this, uh, specifically uh, with, with the PD for the teachers? They, they are doing such a heavy, heavy lift right now. And anything that we can do that is not mandated, uh, I would strongly encourage the district consider that as far as PD for our, our teaching uh, community. Uh, with this one specifically, it, it is a mandate. Is there any wiggle room, anything that we can do, and anything that we would be able to modify in approving this tonight?
So, respond to some of that as well, but just as a, a, a quick reminder, since uh, since approximately uh, May, Dr. Raish, and, and May and June, when we had discussions with TA about their response to uh, COVID and the pandemic and shutting schools in the spring and all that, uh, we have been asking that perhaps one of the things in HB three, because it's a funding issue, that HB three, you know, money is sent to districts, but then it must be spent on reading academies, a portion of it. And we've asked if that is one of those things that we should pause. TA has the ability to do that. And from the beginning, it was no, that's not one that they're going to pause. Uh, reading academies are extensive. And as Mr. Hogg said, when House Bill three was being deliberated, we certainly had our input. We do believe reading training is important, but it can also be done in different ways. And HB three is very prescriptive. The reading academies are very prescriptive of the teachers and of the administrators. And so um, it has been reinforced over and over, including in documents that uh, there's no give on the reading academies from the state. And so Dr. Wertz, back in the spring, pre-COVID, um, and his team put together a very good plan, and then things changed, as we know. And so uh, they've been working diligently to make sure that it's something that can be accomplished. But it's a requirement from TA, and it, it has, and, and I won't go into this, 'cause we already got started on CCMR, and I could go on for a long time, but it has implications for teachers. And, and it's very much driven from the state. And, you know, uh, you, you'll agree that our teachers are certified. They've had their own training. They've been teaching reading for a number of years, many of them. Uh, and then here comes this requirement through HB three. So we're implementing it in a responsible way by cohorts, uh, trying to, to do that. Uh, and, and here's where we are in terms of the reading academies now. Other district training, it's certainly something we can look at. Uh, we have gotten some feedback that, you know, can we moderate or, or kind of push back a little bit of district training? And I think we, we certainly will look at that. But reading academies are unique. Dr. Wertz, I don't know if you wanna add anything to the reading academy discussion?
Um, the only thing I would add um, is um, we tried to find the, the most meaningful way for teachers to have as much flexibility as possible uh, in order to meet the requirement. Um, so that's the reason why we, one of the reasons why we went with the online version. Once we hit COVID, when we resurveyed, um, it was almost unanimous by, by schools, um, principals, and everybody that they wanted, they would rather just be online. The nice thing about online, um, the online version, is it gives teachers a lot of flexibility. In scenarios where they had to do face-to-face, um, there would have been a requirement to, you know, meet and do training on a regular, uh, with a specific cadence, like monthly, for example. Um, in the, in the online, they, there's a little bit more of a self-paced environment in that there is um, one artifact that's required to be completed by December, and then they have until the end of the school year to do the rest of it. Um, the reason why it's kind of important to note about adjustments um, is because if uh, if teachers who are enrolled right now, for example, to do the academy, um, if they were to unenroll and do it later, they would be forced to go through a, a whole another scenario, which would be face-to-face, because they, they're, they're right now, and they're online. So to Dr. Cavassos' point, um, our goal really has been to try to provide support um, with the reading academies in the classrooms through PLCs, recognizing that, you know, school's getting started, and it's been kind of hard for teachers at, right now. And so um, the good thing is, is that we have flexibility over the course of the year to adjust the pace um, with our vendor uh, while they're learning. The, the other, the only other thing I wanted to mention, um, which doesn't totally hit on exactly what your, what your, what your, what your reference point is, which I understand why, why the question's being asked. But just something I think's important to emphasize is uh, what we are not doing with House Bill three reading academies is just using it as a checkbox to um, get through a hoop with House Bill three, for example, because as Dr. Cavassos said, every teacher, kindergarten through third grade is required by law, by a specific deadline to um, finish their reading academies, and that deadline is still the same as it was. Um, and, and um, and so, and even, and then they're actually working towards a, a certification for new teachers that come on board. For us, even though it's a requirement of a House Bill three, it's also a meaningful strategy to really ensure that the science of teaching reading is deeply embedded into our instructional process, so that we can overcome some of the challenges that we have with reading instruction for our younger grades. If you were to see our data from primary grades, there are very concrete gaps that exist that we need to address in order for kids to be more proficient readers in third grade, which we know is an indicator for future success. So um, I only wanted to underscore that point, which is um, while, while there is um, the timing, of course, of anything, we're working on, and as school district is challenging during the pandemic, our, our, our effort is to support teachers along the way, because to us, this is an actual, real strategy. It's not just a checkbox.
Am I on yet? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Um, I, I appreciate your words and, and Dr. Cavassos as well. It's uh, it's, it's so very It's so very difficult. That's all we know that our families are going through, our teachers are going through. So it is unfortunate that this is a mandated situation. If there's any possibility of adjustment that doesn't turn out to be a negative net effect for our teachers, I surely hope that there's something that could maybe be done there. They're just, they're tapped. And I think they're great professionals, and they have an understanding to be able to see the benefit of this. But if there's any possible adjustment, I guess the question that I'm leading to with that is, where does that potential flexibility come into play? Is it campus by campus that they say, okay, you mentioned by December, that X number of hours or cohort has to be done? Is the flexibility really up to the teacher individually to, here's whatever that deadline is, I don't know what it is, let's say it's December 5th. Can they pile it all in and do it on December 4th? Or is that a campus-by-campus mandate? How does that work operationally?
Well, and we can work with our vendor on that specifically because the way the system is set up, teachers, while they're working online, they're actually attached to a coach that works with them. And then, of course, the idea is that we complement that in PLCs at school. Really, because it's not even necessarily campus-based, it's more teacher-driven in that way. There are modules. All the modules are pre-established by the state. The training is kind of, it's already packaged and set in stone. Doesn't matter whether you do face-to-face or you do online. The content is exactly the same, and it's articulated already by TEA. But teachers pacing through the actual online modules can vary from teacher to teacher. We do encourage schools to work together because one portion of the training that TA requires is that teachers not only learn the content, but then apply the content, and then they have to share evidence that they've actually mastered that skill. Because, as I mentioned earlier on the 60 by 30 plan, the reason why House Bill 3 was so focused on reading academies is because reading achievement in early childhood grades across the state is notoriously low. And so the rigidity around requirements of what's in the teaching of the reading academies is set in stone in terms of what's there for all teachers to participate. And it doesn't matter, like I said, if you're a kinder, first, second, or third grade teacher, there's a deadline in terms of a year that everyone has to be trained. And so if the teachers, so even though that's in place, I guess what I'm trying to say is teachers can pace themselves or go through the modules at different paces individually. They find themselves, as long as they meet that deadline, which I said is one artifact is due in December, and then the rest is due by the end of the year. But as I was mentioning, the reason why we think it's good to do it with each other in the school is because if you're working with your colleagues on your grade level, because we're only doing third grade this year, and you have three other third grade teachers, and they're all working on the same content you are, you can work with each other in terms of your artifact submission and creation rather than just trying to do it on your own. However, that is an option if that's what the teacher chooses to do.
It's a little bit of, there we go. Yeah, I appreciate that. It's, yeah, I do appreciate it. I think it's something that, as we've already been talking about, another point of disconnect between what is reality right now at the state level versus what is ideal. And I appreciate you moving forward and balancing the ideal or what they look at as the ideal, but taking it and making it something good and not just a compliance checkbox. That is very important. That is not something that we could have said, I couldn't have said as an individual a number of years ago about other things that were more compliance-focused or driven. And that's certainly not how the district operates now, and I thank you for that. I would encourage, perhaps through the Governance Committee, that this board continue to advocate a letter at a minimum to our governor, definitely to the commissioner, but as we all know, it seems that there will be movement if it comes from the governor. And somebody has to make them understand that there's just too much going on right now. So I understand the 20 by 30, 30 by 60, all of that stuff, but maybe we need to put a little bit of COVID apostrophe in there, or asterisk in there. Okay, well, moving to just a curiosity topic. With the ACT, what does that actually look like? You said it was October 20th?
This is Dr. Brown's presentation. That's part of the update because it's coming up. But it's for high school seniors, and it's open for all of them for free. And they're signing up. In fact, the deadline's already, but they've signed up. Dr. Wertz can address it now, or we can?
Well, yeah, I was just curious with the hybrid scenario in play, how does that work? So again, just a curiosity point.
Seniors will report that day. And others will stay asynchronous. Is that right, Dr. Wertz?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Did you say October 20th, the seniors who signed up are able to come in and take the exam?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's all I have at this point. I, again, appreciate everything. It's really impressive to think of being able to get at the true learning strategies and abilities of students. And to be able, as you said, to, of course, for me, being a farm D at, you know, speaking prescriptively, that's a great analogy. I'm looking very forward to seeing how that actually yields in results. I'm not sure that this is the year to measure that. So we'll see down the road, but I think there's definitely some great stock potential in it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I'm looking at my colleagues. I don't see any more questions. See Ms. Walton. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I just want to put a big exclamation mark after what Dr. Reich said about how our teachers are doing so much and focusing so hard on our children and our students and all the things they're doing. And just reiterate, if there's anything as a district we can do to figure out a way to give them a little more time to catch up and catch their breath and see the sunshine again, I encourage Dr. Wertz and Superintendent Kavasos to please do that. It's way too much. It's way too much stress, and it's all happening at the same time that we're all stressed out by the pandemic. So they're just getting a double whammy, and we've got to do what we can. I hope they know how appreciated they are by this board. I hope that's been transmitted because it wouldn't be happening without them. They're making this work. With that, I will say that I move to approve the proposed five-year early childhood literacy and mathematics and college career and military readiness, CCMR. These goals as outlined by Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Ms. Walton, for the comment. Fully agree with you on that. And also, I will say thank you for the motion. At this time, I'm looking for a second, and I see Ms. Fowler. I hear a second from Ms. Fowler. Any further discussion as we do have to approve this approval on behalf of HB3? Seeing no other discussion points, we will move to Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Thank you much, Mr. Chapa. Six, I can't even say what I'm thinking. Six votes are in the approval. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to, thank you, Dr. Wertz and staff for that presentation. We'll move on to discussion action item D, reopening schools. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And tonight, we bring another update, as we do every board meeting, of the progress of our instruction that's going on, the progress of our hybrid and our transition now on Tuesday to another phase of instruction in our school district. And we bring summary level, and I think I shared this last time with the board. What you see is a summary level at the governance level. But you know that there is a lot of detail and work underneath each one of these summary slides. And before Dr. Brown starts, I want to thank her and her leadership for amassing this, because a lot of this comes under the school leadership area, but also cross-departments with health services, with operations, with facilities, and with instruction. And so thank you, Dr. Brown, for your leadership here on this effort. And we have Annette Minnery and others that are also available to answer questions because we'll get into some data. But I do want to start by just reinforcing the fact that, you know, we know that there's a situation with a pandemic that is very challenging, continues to be challenging. And I just appreciate the board and our community, our teachers, for their adaptability. And quite frankly, that adaptability from a board level and a school district level is going to continue. There are challenges that we're facing even today. But I do know that with the dedication that we have with our team, the protocols that we have, the fidelity to that, that we're able to respond to those challenges. But we have to be prepared to continue that response. And so tonight, you're going to hear some information about response tools, if you will, at the individual campus level as we face challenges. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown and certainly be open to questions and discussion after the presentation. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Vice President Hogg, members of the board, and of course, our superintendent, thank you for the opportunity today to provide a brief return-to-school update for the board. So today, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about enrollment and attendance, providing a brief update on that, in-person learning update, as well as AISD in Tarrant County COVID data. Are you all able to see my screen? Okay, let's see. Let's try that again, then. Okay, hopefully that's better. All right, so this is what we'll discuss at a glance today, as I mentioned. And of course, as always, we will start with our guiding principles. Our guiding principles, of course, have undergirded all of the work that we've done, all the planning for the last several months, as I share with you during every board meeting. So of course, asking for flexibility and grace and extending that. Of course, as Dr. Kavasos mentioned, just being in the middle of a pandemic, lots of things are shifting. It's a very fluid situation. One of our other guiding principles is ensuring that we have educational equity. There's access to resources for all of our students and opportunities to engage in rigorous learning, whether they are at home or they are in person for instruction. Prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and our staff members is also a priority. And engaging in stakeholder input, getting feedback and input from those who are closest to the work. So our operation registration, we continue to provide updates for you as to our current enrollment. We are at about 96.3% of our projections, so just shy of 57,000 students. In Arlington, you know that we've had, we've taken concerted efforts to try to reach out to students who may not have yet registered just to make sure we didn't miss any potential registrant and make sure our kids are in school. So as you're aware, we started our hybrid instruction last week. We had our phase-in to in-person instruction. So here's just a brief data from September 28th to yesterday. About 31% of our enrolled students did attend in-person during their scheduled Alpha, with our Alpha surname. We had about 63% that continued to learn virtually, and then about 6% of our students who were absent. And what that means is they did not show up in person, and they did not engage in our learning platform, Canvas or Seesaw. So about 6% of students during the last seven days. So as we know that we are transitioning to October 13th, being a pre-K through 8 learning, everyday learning for any student who has signed up for in-person learning. So right now, our numbers show about 44% of our students have selected in-person learning, 53% virtual, and 3% who are still undecided. As I shared during our last update, there are opportunities for parents who decide they want to change the learning environment that they had previously selected for their student. So we know that there might be some adjustments and some shifts in this data. So we wait for October 13th to provide more real-time data and access to what our students have selected for their learning environment. So let's talk a little bit about in-person learning, just a couple of updates we want to share with you. One, there's no secret that we certainly have students who have learning gaps. We went into closure in March. Although we did offer at-home learning for our students, we know there are still some significant gaps with students in their learning. And so one of the first things we think is important for us to do is to examine the root cause for lack of student progress. The end of the first six weeks was the last week. And so now we are assessing report cards to determine what are the reasons why some students who have not made progress, what's stopping them from making that progress? And so Dr. Wertz, through the task force in the past couple of months, worked on grading guidance. And this is just to issue additional information and guidance to teachers to really help them understand the importance of offering multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate mastery. So how can we ensure that with those gaps that we know are there for many of our students, how are we giving them additional opportunities to master the content? And of course, it impacts grading as well. Making sure, seeing our response to intervention process, our RTI program, that when we do have students who are struggling, that we're taking prescriptive and decisive actions to ensure they're able to close that gap. And of course, one way we do that is providing tutoring opportunities for our students who are struggling or need additional support with their assignments. This leads us also to Project PASS, which is an opportunity for students who are struggling, who may have had a failing grade during the first six weeks. They will be able to log into Edge Newity to recover those grades. Now, this is only for our secondary students. And if they have a 69 or below, they're eligible to log into Edge Newity. Students can self-enroll in Edge Newity. They have an opportunity then to take a self-assessment, a pre-assessment, to determine where those gaps, instructional gaps, might be. And then during their time in Edge Newity, they're able to do their best to master the content. They can earn up to a 70. So it gives them an opportunity to earn the credit where they may have lost in the first six weeks. Now, we also know that there's a teacher-based grade redemption process. And this is going to be for elementary and secondary students. So again, any student as below a 7 in their class for the first six weeks are eligible for grade redemption. So it's important that we are working with teachers on asking a few guiding questions to determine the path of the course, the course path that students will be able to take to be able to recover that grade. And so we want to know, does a student have low assessment grades? Are they low assignment grades? Are they missing assignments, just a few that they're missing? And then are there lots of zeros that can be resubmitted for that particular student? So once the teacher has that information, they'll be able to provide additional opportunities to make up work, to redo assignments, to redo assessments during that failed six-week period. Again, I think the biggest part we want to reinforce is this is, we want to make sure our students all have an opportunity, multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery of the content. Teachers then, at the end, based on how the student performed, would submit a grade change based on how well they were able to master the content from that particular six weeks. Also, as it relates to in-person learning, just a reminder about our special education students. We are, all of our high school students will continue high- We are, all of our high school students will continue hybrid beginning Tuesday, October 13th. And so, our high school students, who are special education students, will be able to attend in-person daily, regardless of their alpha. And that's again, for those who select to attend in-person learning. So we talked a little bit about this during Dr. Words' presentation, and that's our ACT. So ACT testing is coming up on October 20th. The ACT gives us an opportunity to assist our college-bound seniors in assessing how ready they are for college. Helps them qualify for scholarships, determine financial aid that's out there, as well as help them identify college major. And this is actually one of our equity strategies that we've had in our system for quite some time. And it provides access to free testing for all of our seniors. So Dr. Kavasos shared earlier that students were asked to preregister for the ACT. So we would have an opportunity to know how many students will be there and be prepared for those students to test in person. So because we are testing in person, it's important, of course, we're following all of our health and safety protocols, and we're guided by that. As such, on that day, if you are a non-testing high school student, you will engage in asynchronous online learning that day. You will do that from home. So on October 20th, if you are not testing, you will engage in online instruction asynchronous from your home, while those students who are testing will be able to have access to the entire building. We'll be able to spread them out, and the proctors and students will be safe to administer those tests. Our special education students, who are in a specialized program, will be able to attend in-person on October 20th, and that'll just be it for half a day. So half a day at the end of testing, all of our students will go home, and our transportation will run, and we'll just ask those students to engage in regular asynchronous learning once they return to their home that afternoon. So briefly, I want to spend some time talking about our Tarrant County Public Health metrics for safer in-person instruction. We talk about this every meeting, and so there's no secret that we're looking at the seven-day moving average of making sure that it's less than 10% or less, looking at the number of cases at 2,000 cases per week or less than those, at least four weeks of data showing stable or declining case counts. And then also, our CLI, our COVID-like illness data percentage, trending lower for at least the last two weeks. And of course, the percent of hospital beds also being below 10%. So this data, of course, is updated regularly on the Tarrant County dashboard. And so, just to share an overview of where we are in the data I pulled today. A seven-day moving average for positivity rate is at about 11%. And you can see through the month of September, it has been trending a little bit higher than 10%. Cases per week, our most recent data shows 2,771 cases. The seven-day moving COVID-like illness percentage is 2.6. And our percent of hospital total beds occupied by COVID patients is at about 7%. AISD COVID data to share with you, just who we have right now, the percentage of, the number of people that we have in quarantine right now. We have 171 staff members, as of yesterday afternoon, that were currently under quarantine. And of course, that spans the course of, you know, 10 to 14 days. So we have them in the next two weeks, of course, will be returning back to school. We have about 50 staff members. We have about 50 staff members who are currently under quarantine due to work exposure. So they were exposed in the workplace. Students currently under quarantine, we have 266 students who are quarantined at this point, at this moment. And I think what this slide really just reminds us of is how can be disruptive to the system and to the school and to the operations, and how important it is that we understand how fluid this, the nature of this virus is and its impact, and how we are able to bounce back and alter the course as best as we can in those instances, where we're having some staff who are quarantined or students. So as I shared during our last board update, our AISD dashboard is up, and it is updated every single week. So as of yesterday afternoon, 22 active staff cases and 13 active student cases. Also wanted to share, just to provide a visual, a graphic that shares, that shows you how many people have self-reported month by month. So that is something that we've outlined to staff early on, that if you are, if you have symptoms, COVID-like symptoms, if you've been exposed to someone who's positive, or you've been a contact that you are to self-report. And you can see the data from March to June, we had 121 self-reports. In September, it jumped to 297. And already, in just a week in October, we're already at 132 self-reporting cases. Again, any three of those categories would be a reason for someone to self-report. So as such, it's important that we are proactive in determining what are some potential scenarios that might cause us to, that may cause a disruption in in-person instruction. It's important that we're looking at those on a case-by-case basis, of course, in collaboration with our health officials, with Annette Minnery, as well as our senior team, to determine when we have to make a move that might be disruptive to the in-person instruction. So it could result, for example, in an impacted group being isolated. That could be a grade level. It could be a hallway. It could be a group of students that have to go into quarantine. And so, looking at those on a case-by-case basis, depending on the level of contact tracing and exposure that is happening at the campus or in that specific department. If there is a school closure, that will depend on the health and safety circumstances on that campus that would threaten the operational and instructional capacity for us to engage in school. That could lead us to potentially close school for five days. It could be 10 days. It could be up to 14 days, depending on the specific scenario. So I thought that was just important, that we just continue to message that we are, we're likely to have disruptions. We're already having some of that in this fluid process that we're in, and system challenges as well, not only to classroom instruction, but also to transportation, food services, custodial services. Those are all operations that could be impacted by the type of closure and quarantine that we have, that I've referenced in the previous couple of slides. And that's all I have for today's update, so we are happy to take questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Sorry, I was waiting for the slide to change up there, and we're at that. At this time, we have questions from any of my colleagues. Mr. Wilbanks.
Hold on one second, Ms., Dr. Brown. Let me get my notes inlined. So if you could go back to slide number seven, please. Actually. Yeah, so yeah, slide seven. So on slide seven, you mentioned kind of your guidelines for assessing learning gaps and also response to intervention for those students who are following behind, for whatever reason. I want to say I applaud you guys for going to a mastery-based approach for your grading guidance. I think that's important in this time, as, you know, some students are kind of struggling with the virtual, if they're at home or for whatever reason, given what's going on, and giving them the chance to actually master the content is important, because we know those are learning critical building blocks for later grades and later student success. And you mentioned, you know, for students who have grades below 70, that you guys are going to give them an option to go back and redo the work and opt for a better grade. But what about, say, a kid who has a 74 on an assignment that's not below the 70? That's not really mastery, that doesn't demonstrate mastery. Is it not an equity issue for that student not to be able to go back and be able to prove that grade as opposed to the arbitrary cutoff of 70?
Dr. Words, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so the, what you're describing, of course, as you know, is mastery-based grading, which is not currently our embedded practice across Arlington. It's something that we would like to strive for. What the intent of this act, right, action right now that she's describing is to provide opportunities for kids who are failing to at least recover that grade so that they don't find themselves in a situation at the end of the semester or school year where they are no longer earning credit or, and/or are required to be retained based on board policy. The guidance that the task force worked on over the course of the summer, which we'll be introducing to the system here in the next couple of weeks, really outlines four major pillars of grading and provides teachers with three or four best practices attached to each of those pillars and what that practice could look like in the online and in the face-to-face environment, with the emphasis on growth mindset, working towards mastery, having multiple opportunities to show where you're moving and where you are in terms of understanding the content, rather than having grades just be, like I was saying, or like you're kind of alluding to, which is the average of all failures along the way. But mastery-based grading, in the purest form, which is kind of what I believe you're describing, is not necessarily a pervasive practice in our system or what I would say in most systems. But it is a best practice that we want to work for. But in this circumstance, that's not the intent of the guidance that we're providing right now. The intent of the guidance is to ensure that kids can be promoted and that they're earning credit, and so they don't find themselves in a, in a off-track for graduation down the road because of failing one six-week period or two-six-week periods and unable to, you know, redeem themselves, so to speak, by the end of the semester.
Just to be clear, I wasn't alluding to mastery-based grading, but that specific bullet point that Dr. Brown described of where your guidance for help for teachers to help those struggling students to take on a more mastery-based approach, to giving them a chance to recover that credit. And I can, I agree, that's a great strategy, and I was just applauding that. But I believe she also mentioned that those options were going to be made available for students who had a grade of 70 and below. And my specific question was, why wouldn't we want to give students that had maybe a 74 a chance to prove mastery and provide additional proof that they had mastered for, to better their grade and not necessarily do mastery-based grading? But again, I think it's clear, and again, I think that's a prudent approach, given the situation that we're in. The other thing on the response to intervention, I think we really have two large buckets of students that we're dealing with here. And I don't want to go into the numbers tonight, but what are we doing for the students who may have opted for virtual, who just are not showing up and engaging? And they're not just, and they're not turning in anything. How big of a problem is that? And what are we doing specifically to address that?
Right now, we're in the process of evaluating that, including the difference between those who attend in person and those that stay home. Because every student was staying home, there's no way to distinguish right now the difference, because right now, we only, the six-week report card grades and the progress reports that were published last six weeks had every student staying home. So what we are in the process of trying to identify is what we believe are engagement rates. So TEA established specific engagement requirements for what we would, what we would consider engaged for attendance purposes. And then there's the other area, which is persistence in the course and amount of time on the LMS and actually doing the work. It's a complicated question to answer, because there's no benchmark that tells us if you spend this much time on a specific course, you're going to do this well. It really depends on the content and the activities that the teachers provide, but we can get a sense by looking at the data. You know, how many kids are just logging in and logging off? Can we relate that to the number of zeros that are actually being recorded? It's just kind of complex, because it's not based in PMS or anything like that. It has to be dug out of our Canvas LMS system, which is something that Dr. Barlow's team is working on. But it is a question we have, we're seeking to answer. And the reason being is because ideally, students who are really struggling with that environment, if we can strategically support them in a different way, whether that's face-to-face, those are some things we would have to consider as a team.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Kavasos.
Okay, so if I could expand a little bit on the first part of the question, it kind of ties to our previous discussion, and then I'll get to this question. It's a matter of prioritization. And teachers always have the freedom, if you will, to do redemption grades and things like that, even 74, like you described, Mr. Wilbanks. But we want to be purposeful in the ones that are failing. And it's a prioritization, because they've got so much, the teachers, right now. And we want to give them as many tools as possible, but we want to set realistic expectations to prioritize the students that are most failing, because those are the ones that, if they fail another six weeks or the semester, they lose credit. And the implications on that is just long-lasting, unfortunately. To this other question about, you know, if a student stays home and what's their type of performance and things like that, it's a very important question. And I think as we move into this next phase of our district in terms of instruction, what we're examining first, and we don't have that today, because it's part of an examination, is are the students that are failing deciding to stay home? Or are the students that are failing deciding to come to school? Remember, we've only had nine days of face-to-face, right? So it's hard to correlate that you've been here nine days, and it's hybrid, so it's really about half of those days, that it's had an impact on you and your performance. But the first question for us is, who's deciding if they're coming or not? Is it students that are failing, students that are not failing? Combination, is it mixed? Is it something that's not sourceable? And then we want to make sure that we then answer the next question, which is, if you're staying home, are you passing or failing? Is there any difference in that? And then ultimately, and this gets more complicated as we move forward, is how do we provide interventions for students that are at home and students that are coming to school? But to Dr. Words' first point, I think it's a little early to make that correlation as to failing and passing based on your choice of instruction. But it's certainly something we're going to track. And the first level of that, and it's, we don't have it tonight, because there's a lot to track on that, is of the students that are failing, have they decided to come to school or not? What is their decision point, their family's decision point? Because more than, is that the reason they're failing? More for us is, how are we going to provide these interventions? If you decide to stay home, or if you decide to come to school? So you'll, it's a top priority for our team, because it has major implications with credits, passing, promotion, I mean, on down the line.
Yeah, thank you for your clarification, Dr. Kavasos. And I agree, it's a large problem, and it should be an area of clear focus for us, I think, going forward. Because I think we do have our normal response to intervention for the kids who are either in-person or at home, and they've got a 69 or maybe a 54 in failing a class or two. And then I think we do have another bucket of students that I'm really worried about, and those that are not engaging, that have decided to stay home, and they're not engaging. And those are the ones that I'm really concerned with, because I think the response that we're doing now is very time-consuming. It's very necessary. But I think it's adding to the workload of teachers who are already pushed to the limit. And I think we need to really think creatively on how do we effectively reach those students and bring them back into the fold? Even saying, hey, look, you have no choice now. It's time, I know a lot of districts around the state have said, no, you don't get a choice now. You tried virtual. We need you to come in and begin with that teacher. And I'm not going to, you know, whatever is most appropriate. I think that's the thing we need to start examining next and figure out how to reach those, because those are the kids I'm really concerned with right now. And I'm also concerned with the amount of time that teachers who care dearly for those kids are spending trying to even make contact with those kids. And it's putting, I think, a lot of them at the end of their ropes. And whatever supports we can give those teachers, we still have to do, go the extra mile to try to reach those kids and engage them and bring them back in and give them a path to success. But it's a tough situation. And I think it warrants a lot of examination of how we do that effectively.
I completely agree. I completely agree. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Ms. Fowler.
One of the things that that some teachers have been talking to me about is the fact that many, many, many of their students, the parents are not enrolled in the parent's self-serve. And I think that may be one thing that we need to look at as far as measuring success with students. Because they're, the parents, when they finally reach them by phone, are saying, well, I had no idea he was failing. He told me he turned everything in. But these are probably many of the same parents that haven't even logged on and set up the parent's self-serve. So I know it would be a major task, but I'm wondering, is there a way that we could automatically enroll parents? That way, we don't have to wait for them to take the initiative or take those steps. Because the teachers that I've been talking to, they're spending hours and hours and hours trying to reach parents, trying to reach students. And that's just added on to everything else they're going through. Talked to a teacher that spent two hours trying to contact parents for only two classes, two extra hours. And some of them, she can't even reach the parents. There are, you know, five numbers that have been disconnected. It's just a nightmare. But one of the things that I think would help, if we could get these parents signed up in the self-serve, at least that way, we would know that they're getting the information.
Mike is on, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think a combination of strategies, that that is certainly one of them. That's where parents can get the immediate information, not only of grades, but progress reports and grades, current grades. Our team has done a very extensive job to also inform parents of Canvas notifications. And Canvas notifications are very, very significant, and parents can sign up for that, and they're very clear. Missing assignments, graded assignments, they've been reviewed. And and it's, at this point, it's probably an abundance of notifications from Canvas, but that's a good thing. Aaron Berales and his team has worked diligently on that as well. I know we've offered to a campus if they need specific parent training. We can look into it. We can automatically enroll them. There's, there's a lot of logistics to that because sometimes they don't provide an email, and so you need an email to do that. But but we can look at other, other ways to push that information out. Because that is, that is a source of knowledge. And just to kind of complete that thought, the second piece to that, which is very important, is knowing what to do about it and being able to support. And so we, we understand that our families have many challenges right now. And and so it's, it's a partnership. And we provide tools, we provide support, they provide support, they provide tools. And that partnership, we have to continue to build during this time. As we progress into the weeks and more face-to-face instruction occurs, there'll be other needs, but there'll be some solutions as well, because we'll be seeing the students more frequently. So anyway, I agree with you, Ms. Fowler. And and we'll look at strategies that comprehensively push that information out. And it's one thing to have the information, it's another thing to be able to have the support, to do those, to support your students. But completely agree.
That would be one less thing to put on the, on the teacher. At least here, he would know, you know, I pushed it out. It's out there for them to look at or not, rather than him having to call and call and email and try to do all this. It's just too much.
Yep. And and quite frankly, and this is a bigger discussion, but we're into this bigger discussion, right? But it's a bigger discussion because, you know, when you start looking at the state that hasn't made a decision about STAR, they're plowing ahead with STAR accountability, changing the rules with CCMR. That just adds to the, there's, there's a certain timeline to the curriculum. If you're a fifth grader, in order for you to be prepared for a very high-stakes exam, we have to move the curriculum along. And so this, these, these things all come together. And and you're right, the relief points need to be sought out, but it's a bigger issue comprehensively with the state as well. From, from the classroom level, as we see students more frequently, we'll be able to intervene. I can't lose sight of the fact, because we're having this discussion, that one of the slides was about disruption to the learning. And that's a reality with the pandemic, that there will be disruption to whether we have to quarantine classes, quarantine a group of students, quarantine a whole, you know, activity. And then ultimately, whether we open, keep the school open or have to close it for a period of time to do contact tracing. So you're well aware of that, Ms. Fowler, and I'm just reinforcing some of the things you're saying on the, on the times that we're in right now and a complicated service to students that we have to deliver. But it's complicated, and we have to continue to, I think, find those solutions, but also be prepared for that disruption, unfortunately, to, to be part of our situation in the coming weeks.
And if I could just add one other thing, you know, these students that were maybe not passing, you know, how many of them are students that have learning differences? And they're used to, excuse me, they're used to getting accommodations?
Absolutely.
And they have an IEP in place. And those are the kids, I think, that are really, really struggling. They struggle anyway, but much less having to do virtual and not having a teacher, not having maybe a resource room to go to for that added help. I just worry about those students, that we're really going to lose them. And then once, you know, part of learning is being confident and feeling good about your learning. And once those kids lose that confidence, I think it's going to be very hard to bring them back. So I think we've got to think about some things to put in place to help those students. They're not getting their accommodations. We, we can't give them right now, but they're not getting their accommodations, and I think that's an issue.
Yeah, and I think you noticed in one of the slides there that we're, we're bringing special ed students frequently and, and offering them daily at the high school level, for example, where we are in a hybrid situation, to, to really be able to provide those services. So, yeah, I completely agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Other colleagues' comments? And while you're waiting, unless you're ready, I'll, I'll say, I think, you know, all of us up here have gotten those crying phone calls from parents. We've gotten those crying phone calls from teachers. And we hear those discussions. And following up on Ms. Fowler and Ms. Wilbanks, I think the more we can find of what we can pull from teachers, the better. Ms. Walton and I have, I think, lived our lives fighting against paperwork for teachers, and it's those little things. If there's any little extra thing that can be pulled, and listen, that is a truly a management decision, and so it's a, a lot for us to say because it's not really a governance item for us to discuss. And so we're not going to sit there and say, here's what we're forcing, but we're going to encourage, I think is what I hear from all my colleagues and what we hear. Any relief that can be provided on those sides is a huge, huge factor. And hearing Ms., Dr. Brown talk about it, and she said, significant learning gaps, we've all had the discussions about what the failure rate's coming. I think, you know, maybe not the next board meeting, and possibly if y'all are ready, but the next one, I think, a very deep dive into some of the student achievement. Once we have those numbers to be able to tackle this is the right way for our board to govern and see what is happening on this impactful. Because, Dr. Voss, as you said it, you know, we're now at the point where we can start seeing where those impacts come from. And I, I know how much your staff is, y'all are looking at all those different pieces on there. But I think it is the interventions and what we can have and what the impacts we have, and if there's anything that needs to come back to this board from a governance standpoint, and to look at those to help with that student achievement. Because, you know, listen, safety is always going to be first in this district, but we've got to then talk student achievement in this whole scenario of what's happening for our students. So I think I hear the whole board, talking to colleagues, talking to teachers, parents, that is, you know, any relief that can be given is, teachers are being worked hard than they've ever been worked. You know, I get upset when I see some people saying that aren't giving the credit to teachers for the amount of work that is happening. But it, really get to know some, and you'll find out exactly how much is truly going on with these teachers right now. So I'm sorry, Ms. Walton, you're, you're hesitant, so I took the floor for just a second, but please go right ahead.
Oh, no, I, I just, I am so proud of this district. We have, I think it's less than 4%, Dr. Cavassos, of kiddos that we haven't made contact with.
Yeah, that's good.
And comparing that to other large districts like ourselves, that's phenomenal. And the reason for that is the extra mile that each and every one of our teachers and campus administrators and staff have gone to, to reach those kids. And, you know, when I hear their broken hearts is when they've reached them. And there are reasons, especially with our high school kids, that they're not coming back because they're having to maybe take care of younger kids or work because the parents are out of work and provide food, you know, on a shelter. There's some really heartbreaking stories out there. And that's, I think, lending more pressure and more stress to our teachers as they're realizing how desperate some of the situations are for their students who they dearly love. And I echo everything that's been said here tonight about paperwork or training or PLCs or whatever that can be reexamined and streamlined a little bit. Because our teachers are, you know, like Mrs. Fowler was saying, spending hours just trying to track down a parent to talk to them. You know, I've, I've got a letter here from somebody from the Curtech Center, you know, six calls before they finally reach someone, trying to find a kid, you know, to be sure and tell him to check in. You have to check in today. You're not, you know, and you're not going to be counted in attendance today. And, you know, saying, well, I'll go home and try from there, you know, after work. Anyway, I, I just want to, you know, wrap my arms around every one of these teachers and librarians and all these people who are just working so, so very hard to make this district shine and help our, our students. That's got to be their main focus. And anything else that the board or the administration, the district somehow can do to give them the time and, and the energy to, to focus on the important things, making sure no one, you know, that the learning gap is being closed, being sure those kids are okay, the social, emotional aspect that we are addressing. Our counselors, I know, are doing a super job there. So it's quite a report from Dr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Brown, so much for all you do. You have such a heart for, for helping in so many ways. And giving us this information really helps us to understand. So thank you for all of your hours at this. Just off on another tangent, if Nurse Minnerling is in the house with us, I, okay, well, I was thinking about the regular flu as another aspect that is, has a potential to calabrois. And just if I've had my flu shot, I hope all of you have had your flu shots. I encourage everybody out there to get their flu shots, teachers, everybody, get your kids shot, you know, whatever. But I don't know exactly how young, the young, you know, how old you have to be to get a flu shot, but I'd kind of like to know that. And is it important for our, our young people, our students, to get these flu shots too? And have we given any thought to working out some method for giving our students and our teachers and all of our staff access to a flu shot? If that would even, I don't know if that would be worthwhile or not. From what I'm reading, the regular flu does complicate things with COVID pretty badly. So I don't know if she's heard those, I don't know if she's gotten, there she is! Good evening. So I, did she, did you hear what I was talking about?
Yes, ma'am. You can, you can give really young children flu shots. When they're very young, they need two doses instead of one to be protected. So that's normally done at their pediatricians or at one of the vaccine clinics that works with small children. But it certainly can be done. And, and flu shots really are pretty readily available. And so, yeah, I would, I would encourage everyone to get their flu shot this year.
And has there been given, has any thought been given, given to somehow? I know my beloved school nurse, when I was in Swift, you know, always arranged for some outside group to come in and administer flu shots for the staff that wanted it, you know, for a minimal fee. I, I don't know if that's a possibility anymore in this situation we're in now. But just somehow working to improve the access for our teachers and our staff and maybe our students, if that's, you know, at all possible, if the county health would want to work with us or what else. Just, just a crazy idea that might help, you know, if it helps anybody, it would be good.
We're, we're really trying to limit traffic in and out of the buildings right now and, and situations that would cause us to move students around the building unnecessarily or create congregating situations. Because those are, those are all things that are going to make our, our virus spread problem worse. And so that was, that was a reason that we elected not, not to pursue that this year.
Well, that's just another part of the fallout, I guess. Thank you so much for visiting with me about that. And hang in there, I know you're working really hard. This contact tracing must be a lot of, a lot of hours. Bless you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I'm looking around at other colleagues to see if we have other questions. I know we have many other things to address. Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Voss. I think as we're moving forward, I appreciate all the staff and all the work. We know it's, sorry, Ms. Chopp, did I see your hand over there?
Some questions. And I apologize in advance if I repeat some that have already been asked because I, it's kind of coming through pretty feedbacky on my end. So I'm looking at the numbers that Dr. Brown shared for the attendance that we had for the, the hybrid phase. And I'm just curious, I, it seems to me like the number of people who showed up in person for hybrid is, is lower than what I expected based on the numbers from our prior board meeting presentation. And I just, is my memory correct on that? Or did we have a drop-off in the number of people who actually showed up in person versus the reported numbers?
Yes, and we did have a drop-off. And we had a lot of parents who were changing their minds at the last minute and notified the school. So I think as numbers were shifting in our county, parents made an alternate choice in many cases.
Okay. And I'm going to, I guess I continue a little bit on, well, I'm going to jump around a little bit. So we've, we've heard a little bit of discussion from my colleagues about the workload that the teachers have. And I have, you know, three family members who teach in the district, and I think everybody knows teachers are working really hard right now and, and just really going above and beyond. What are we doing to affirmatively reduce teacher workload right now? What are some of the things that we're doing?
Well, I mean, it, it's pretty heavy right now. I call October Rocktober because it is, it's pretty rocky right now. I know that one of the things that we have discussed, and we discussed in the cabinet a few days ago, is really looking at all of the requirements teachers have to fulfill in the month of October.
in the month of October, for example, trainings, deadlines, expectations to complete modules, and really trying to make sure that we're shifting those and prioritizing them to see, can we extend the deadline on some of these things that we're asking, that originally were asked for in the next couple of weeks, for example? So I know that we are looking at that. Dr. Words and I have had a couple of conversations and looking at just in broad based general, what are the things that we have teachers doing that we can kind of cut back or reprioritize? That's one of the things that we're doing. I know that the principals are working hard to make sure, of course, teachers still have their planning, that they have access to the PLC time as best they can to be able to plan, additional planning with their team members, because they are having to balance in-person and, and virtual learning. So those are a couple of things we're doing right now, just consistency and trying to make sure they have the space and time at school. And then also making sure that we're looking at, how can we reprioritize some of those deadlines to ease the load? Because it's pretty heavy. It was pretty heavy.
Okay. And are there, you know, we've, throughout this process, we've authorized Dr. Cavassos to go seek waivers from the state for various things, some of which don't, don't even really come up on our radar because they're, they're real and the nitty gritty. Are there anything, are there any things available like that on the teacher training side? Are there waivers we can apply for so our teachers don't have to get so many continuing education hours, for example, or anything like that?
I'm not aware, Trustee Choppa. I'm not sure if someone else might have a response to that.
So, no, I mean, in general, the, the big one that we've been, you know, asking, like I mentioned to Dr. Reich earlier, is for the reading academies because they are quite laborious. And I agree completely with Dr. Words that they're a good strategy. It's, it's very good training, you know, for teachers and implementation of curriculum, et cetera. But it is during this time. So that's one example, Mr. Choppa, that we've, we've tried and not very successfully, as many districts have asked. You know, when, when we look at the requirements, October is always, just as Tracy, Dr. Brown said, October is always one of those months that's really challenging. We built in exchange days and things like that, as, as you know, this, this coming up is a four day weekend purposefully because we know October has this kind of issues normally. So we've tried to do some of that, you know, proactively. But we will continue to look. And, and the reason, as, as Ms. Fowler and others have said, the reason it's so challenging during this time is because everything's connected, you know? It's, it's connected with grade redemption. The state has no real allowance for the 90% attendance for you to be able to be eligible for credit or promotion. And so when you think of things like that, I mean, those are real, real traditional things that have existed pre-COVID that continue during this time. Daily attendance is also a struggle, you know, daily engagement. We've advocated for, is there a way where, you know, they can, students can engage at different times, different days of the week, on weekends, and can that count? And so what we're seeing, and, and it's not really improving from the state, is trying to fit a traditional model to a very, very disrupted time in education. And, and so where we've had some success is, is where we have had options. For example, the beginning of year assessment. That was a big assessment that was encouraged by the state for students to take. And it's, it's appropriate to try to determine gaps in instruction, but it wasn't appropriate to give a star-like exam at the beginning of the year. It just doesn't make any sense. And so we pulled back on that. And we said, no, that's, that's one option we had, and we're going to say, we're not going to do it at this time. So it's things like that, big things like that, that maybe go unseen sometimes because we, we just say, this is not the right time for that. I think you've heard on, and it's been mentioned maybe tangentially, if you will, it's been mentioned where this guidance is going to come out and, you know, the draft of the literacy plan, all that, because we're trying to pace those things so that it's not overwhelming for teachers and campuses. But first six weeks ended, pay the rates are out, redemption of grades have to start, you know, becoming really persistent. And so that's what we're facing even now. We're also facing the first curriculum assessment. And the first curriculum assessment will be our first system-wide indicator of performance on this year's curriculum. We've spent a lot of time developing curriculum assessments, so they're very reliable. Of course, if you're taking it at home, maybe not as reliable, so we're going to have to factor some of that in as well. But to answer your specific question of waivers and things like that, we've, we've tried to uncover as much of that as possible, and we'll continue on things we have. And, you know, I'll give you an example, and it's, again, it's just reinforcing the complexity on some of these things. Last board meeting, we had a big discussion about social emotional learning and the tremendous need for our students. Well, there's social emotional learning training because the feedback we get is that this is a different time and teachers really need some support in understanding how to deliver social emotional learning. But it's during this time. We're trying to address a need and trying to train and support our teachers. So those kind of things we can, we can certainly look at to, to provide some, some relief on those things.
Okay. And you brought up the CAs. I mean, I've heard that, that some campuses, or maybe it's all campuses, will be given CAs next week, which, which currently, it seems that, that we're going to be returning elementary students and junior high students five days away, week next week. And that's going to be, you know, a transition. Is there, you know, can you kind of walk me through the thought process of scheduling the CAs next week, if that's in fact what is happening? And do we think that the results we're going to get from the CAs are going to be statistically valid, you know, given the disruptions that we're experiencing?
The second part of your question is, is somewhat of an unknown because we haven't administered CAs remotely. That, that hasn't been something we've done. So it's, it's somewhat of an unknown. Dr. Barlow has a process where he is, you know, going to try to mitigate that in terms of the scores and make sure that they reflect. And I won't go into a lot of detail because this is, you know, Barlow could, but in terms of past performance and how does it relate to present performance of students and things like that, as we have the data. I do think we've extended the deadline of the CAs, for example, for this exact reason. We stretched the window, keeping in mind that if we don't do a CA, okay, we don't have a system-wide knowledge and view of performance for this year. And they're very robust, the CAs. So we stretched the deadline, gave a lot of flexibility in the implementation, but it's an important informative assessment for, for instruction. So it informs instructions, not just informs the system, it informs instructions where the gaps are. But I'll let Dr. Words speak more specifically about the CAs.
The, the only thing I would add is some campuses have actually finished their CAs already because the window has been going on. So there is a, there's chunk, there's portions of students that are already done. There are some that may take some next week, but they're not all taking them at the same time. We provide a, a window, which, as Dr. Cavassos indicated, we extended to give more campuses flexibility to do that. The other important thing to note about the CA is it's, it's going to help us try to understand where kids are. Right now, we know that there is the COVID slide that happened over spring break. We provided campuses with tools to help them diagnose what some of their gaps may be so they can inform their instruction along the way. What the CAs will allow the teachers to do is to assess how well their kids are actually mastering the content they're teaching now and to then look and see the standards that they're struggling in, if they're vertically aligned to those that were introduced at the end of last school year, so we can see what kind of gaps need to be addressed. But you're right, like, there's, there's so many mitigating factors going on right now in terms of if a student stays home and takes a CA, if a student comes to school and takes a CA, to, for us to know whether they're, that the data is totally clean. Anytime you have half your student body at home participating in assessments, you, you run that risk. But right now, without any kind of data, you're, you're completely kind of walking blind. And what we want to do is try to mitigate as much of the code slide as possible. But, but the, the window has been extended. And as I mentioned, many students have already, have already finished, actually, their CAs.
And are these, the, the CAs, where do they come from? Are we making any adjustments to them for this particular environment that we're in right now? Or is this essentially the CAs that we would use in any given year?
So we, they are, we, the CAs are generated locally. We did make some adjustments in what we wanted. So students that are at home, normally ideally, you would have them take it in an online environment, but because it's challenging to do that, what we did is we provided a PDF of the exam and all the students had to put in the system in terms of the online environment. It's just the, you know, mark the answer, but we gave them a space where they could actually do the work separate to try to mitigate, or at least the fact that they're working in a remote environment. So ideally, if a student was at school, they would have all the workspace in front of them so they could, like, for example, math, work out their problems and things like that. Normally, TEA would have environments where you would actually do your whole assessment online. What we did this time around, and probably CA 2, is just to provide what I would call best descriptions, like a PDF copy of the assessment, so kids can work through it at home if they need to. The only thing they're recording in the electronic environment is the answer, just to capture that. But that's really the only real difference. The other thing about it, too, to keep in mind, is the CAs are generated each year based on the scope and sequence of the curriculum that's being taught during the six weeks in which they're given. And so it's not a benchmark cumulative exam that goes over the course of the whole year like you would see the benchmark in the spring. What you see in CA 1 is based on what was taught in the first six weeks. CA 2 is what was taught in the second six weeks, plus some of the standards from the first six weeks, just to monitor for retention. That's, but they're all locally developed based on our current curriculum and scope and sequence.
Okay. No, that's helpful. Thank you. I want to go back to the discussion of the, sort of, what, the hybrid numbers that I had asked about earlier. Now that we're heading into next week, do we have a sense of how many campuses we, we have, where we have more than 50% of our students returning in, in person?
Yes, sir. We do have the breakdown by school at the percentage of, of parents who did elect for in-person learning. We do have that information.
And were there any that were over 50% of the students?
Yes, sir. And I can't give you an exact number of how many, but we, we certainly do have many schools that were over 50%. Again, initially selecting in-person, and we'll see once we start on Tuesday.
Right, I understand. And are there any of those campuses where we have some concern about the ability of those students to be able to socially distance and follow our COVID protocols, given the number of students that are coming back on campus?
Yes. And the area superintendents have been working with principals on a plan for that. I had conversations, actually, all day today with a couple of area superintendents who had specific schools, that they're expecting 60% returning, for example, and may have smaller classrooms. And so working with principals to make sure that the ways, one-way stairwells, making sure that the stagger, the transitions are staggered, those are some of the, the adjustments they're making to make sure they have as, as least amount of interaction as possible. And they're doing that kind of in sections of the building. So the areas have been working with principals who have those challenges to try to do their very best to physically distance, which is going to be the biggest challenge. Some, some campuses are even leveling classes, again, depending on who shows up on Tuesday, but saying, I have 19 in my seventh grade science class, first period, and I have 13 in another section, we may have to switch pods kids. So there's going to be a lot of that that happens in the next few days when we start next week.
So what, can you give me some more examples of how we're working to make sure that the classrooms themselves are capable of supporting appropriately socially-distanced protocols? Because that's something I know a lot of teachers have emailed us with concerns about. And anyway, if you could just go into some more examples of, of how that's going to work?
Well, I will share what I know, and then Annette, feel free to chime in. I know that the guidance that we have discussed the importance of doing our best to physically distance. In some of those cases, to be very candid, when there's, you know, if you have 15 students in a classroom, and it's a smaller classroom, you do your very best to, you know, use a peripheral part of the classroom to set chair, desk up, so kids are not having to face each other. But there will be some, you know, cases where it's going to be a challenge to physically distance, if we're not able to move kids around and level them. I don't know if Annette or anyone else wants to speak to anything greater, but that's really doing our very best to physically distance the classrooms. And again, depending on who shows up, it's going to be, it's going to help us determine if we need to do additional, or take additional measures to do that.
Okay. And then I had a question, just more from a, as bigger picture standpoint. I mean, we have really consistently said for several months now that we're looking at the statistics, we're following the data. And in your presentation tonight, again, you know, there's the five metric points that, that we have been following and that are on the Tarrant County Public Health Dashboard. And, you know, anybody who's been, been following this, you know, knows that, that we have not been meeting at least one of those metrics for a while. And now it, it's not really reflected in the dashboard and the numbers that lag, there's a few numbers that lag back into September. But if you look at the up-to-date numbers on the Tarrant County Dashboard, the non-school dashboard, you know, I think we're failing four metrics right now, or we very shortly will be, and the possibility of soon failing all five. So I don't think it's a fair characterization for us to say anymore that we're following those metrics. So I understand that we have plans for how we will address COVID-specific situations operationally at our campuses, including classroom shutdowns. We've, we've had a big example where we've had an extracurricular program or two that's had to temporarily be suspended. Stepping away from that sort of tactical operational level and looking at a more strategic standpoint, if we're no longer following the metrics that we've, we've said, set out for several months, and, and this is not a critique of us, no one, no other districts in this area have been following that dashboard since the day that it came out. So it's not a critique of us. But what, from a strategic district-wide standpoint, what are we looking at that's going to help us decide if we need to take some more severe action to prevent community spread in our district?
What was, what was the last part of that?
Yeah, I just said, what, what are some of the, what are we going to be looking at to make decisions from a public health district-wide standpoint going forward?
I think, just to put some context around that, because we've had plenty of discussion over the several board meetings, some context around that is that we are in communication with our local health authorities, Dr. Simmons, Dr. Tenazja from the county. And that communication, I know there's, there's a lot of information, and I shared this at, at one of the faculty meetings that I was able to attend recently. That hasn't changed. And so, you know, even through different situations, our communication and collaboration with our health authorities has been consistent and persistent. And it may seem like, okay, well, we only talk about it sometimes and this, but I want to reinforce that as a context. So from that standpoint, we're working hand in hand, and we will work hand in hand to address situations. And so probably the best example I can provide is when we have situations at a campus where there is a challenge with contact tracing, for example. That's when the health department and us, and Annette Minnery, and senior team members assess the situation to see if, at that time, a school needs to close for a period of time in order for us to ensure that we are notifying individuals that cannot come back with plenty of time and that they have the proper notification, and we can then resume. And so those, those discussions continue and those assessments will continue. I think where we are at this point, because I, I completely recognize that the dashboard continues to be red, and where we are at this point is that we have to make sure that we're ready to respond to situations at our schools. And that we're also clear about the fact that that response may be from one day to the next, maybe from one hour to the next, and we may need to take some actions such as closing the school for a period of time. The goal, though, is to The goal, though, is to make sure we open and sustain opening. We discussed tonight all kinds of different reasons why that goal is important to have face-to-face instruction. And so that's that's our focus, right? But we have to do it in a safe way. And quite frankly, from the state's perspective, and we've been dealing with this since the spring semester. They, you know, when you have an issue, they sometimes are more responsive than planning for an issue. Not suggesting that that's the right way to go. I'm not suggesting that that's, you know, logical, but that's where we are. So I have, as a system, more tools when we encounter problems at a school. And, you know, the the basic example, and I think Annette, if you want more detail, Annette can speak to it, but the basic example is we have a case or a positive case and contact tracing is not able to be done in a timely manner, not because our staff is not capable, but because of the circumstances of the of the case. So there's tools available, including how we come back if we close for a period of time. And and that has to be done by rule, by commissioner decision in terms of TEA, has to be done hand in hand with health authorities. We've seen, just as a reminder, we've seen the health department from a county trying to take, you know, preventive action at a system-wide level, an order for all schools, for example, that was challenged and 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 ultimately they withdrew their order. Not even, you know, let's let's argue about this or let's challenge this. They just completely withdrew their order. So so our communication and our work with them is is again persistent and consistent. And and I I want to thank Annette Minnery because she leads a lot of this effort. And and when there's cases in schools, you know, she she does a full assessment and gives us the the guidance with Dr. Simmons and others. That those are really our tools, Mr. Chapa, at this time.
So I mean, and I appreciate that that very detailed response and I I you know, what I heard a lot of is we have quite a bit of of ability to be reactive at the local level and maybe at the campus level, but it it doesn't sound like we have any longer at our disposal any tools that would help us play a role from a public health standpoint in not contributing to an increase in community spread. Is that correct?
I would probably frame it as, you know, the students that are coming to the school, the teachers that are coming to the school are being screened every day. Their temperature's being taken every day. They're wearing a mask for a long period of time because they're in the school. And so in as much as those are mitigating and they may be, they may seem very small, but when they're with us, they're following certain protocols. To trace to Dr. Brown's point, there's some places, not everywhere, but there are some places where social distance will be a challenge, and that's just, that's completely accurate. But in general, for the most part, when they're with us, when they come to our schools, when teachers come, because remember, we have 8,000 employees, 4,000 teachers, et cetera, principals, et cetera. When they're coming to the school, they're taking a temperature scan, they're doing the screener to see if they have symptoms, they're wearing a mask, they're doing the hand sanitizing, and they're conditioning and forming habits, all of us are, of wearing a mask, of doing the right things to protect not only the self but others. I would consider some of that. Annette, you may completely disagree, but I would consider some of those mitigating strategies in a community. It may be small, but they're persistent, five days a week, across 70 buildings with thousands of students. Ms. Minnery, I don't know if you want to add to that or?
Yes, no, I'd agree. That's that's largely what we have at this point. And we do have a really close relationship with the local health authorities. And in fact, we have a a little spread going on in a support department. And so one of the members of the health team from the fire department is going to come help us with that. That works very closely with Dr. Simmons to sort of help us track down what exactly is going on and is there something that we're not doing that we could do that would improve that situation? And I would anticipate that they would respond exactly the same way if we had a similar situation on a campus.
Okay, and I that sort of leads into, you know, I we had a speaker earlier and so I, you know, I I think she had a good question and so I'll just I'll just ask it. Is is it seems like there have been some some limited flexibility granted by TEA for some districts to remain in a in a hybrid situation when it is probable that the that that campus or maybe a larger level, I don't know, is not going to be able to maintain appropriate social distancing protocols, given the number of students who want to return in person. And so the the speaker, I think, was from Workman. You know, why is that? Why is that not something that would potentially be available to us?
There's my microphone. And I don't have the specifics of of the Dallas ISD. I have a you know, knowledge of others. And when you're in your transition period, you can do just about what you want to do. And they started their transition period later than we did. We started ours August 17. And I think they started theirs after Labor Day and or well after Labor Day, as other districts too. And you know, there's reasons we made our decision and I think we were on the right track on some of that. But all that to say, Mr. Chapa, I don't know if that's because they're still in their transition period where you can do things like that. I do believe that is the case. But every district, once the transition period's over, will face, whenever that day is of their transition period over, will face the rules that that are in place now. And hybrids allowed at at high school and to to remain for as long as, you know, potentially the whole year. I'm not suggesting we'll be in hybrid the whole year, but but it's not allowed at other levels.
So I I so what I'm hearing you say is that our transition period is over and and that's sort of it?
To your question about Dallas ISD and and other districts, when they make decisions, I think in their case, they opened to anybody who wants to. And then they figured out that was too much during their transition period and they pulled back. Now, that that's an assumption because that's what's happened in other places. And I think I'm looking around and others may have knowledge of that. But what we're faced now is our transition period's over, right? And so it ends today. And so the 13th becomes the new instructional phase, if you will. And and really, on the long haul, what you're left with is is making sure that we can respond to situations that happen at different schools. And so that's that's what we've been focused on. That's what a lot of the energy has been driven towards. And and so, you know, the state does allow, you know, if if there is a a significant need or otherwise, you know, to ask for more transition time. But to be clear, the more transition time deals with the same endpoint. The same endpoint, which is five days a week, all students that want to come. And and that endpoint is not something that they have provided flexibility on. And so extension of transition time comes with that notion, A, that you'd have to prove that you need it, and it's more related to, you know, when you're going to bring more kids back to campus. So there's some, there's some, you know, details around that.
A sense of what environment we would need to be in for TEA to entertain that proposal?
I can tell you that on, and I'll answer your specific question, but on on some previous discussions and even planning through our transition period, some of their solutions are are or proposed solutions are not really feasible. So, you know, if you have too many students at one school, send them to another school. And even TEA admits that that's an option, but not a realistic option. The other is that those that that transition is aligned also to what in the community through state order is closed. So there's some assumption there that there's an alignment to how many, you know, the percentage of of occupancy, if you will, on restaurants and things like that to be at 50%, and we're really at 75%. So it's not clear that, you know, they would look favorably on something like that from the state level. But those are some of the things, I think, to answer your question that they would look at. I I'm not sure that they'd look at the number of students coming into a building necessarily, because that hasn't been their position before. If that was their position, they would allow hybrid or or other another variation for the whole year, and that hasn't been the case.
Well, I, you know, I've I've taken up quite a bit of time, so I will, I think I will hold off on the remainder of my questions, but I do just want to say that I had hoped to come to this meeting and the environment, the case environment, the metric environment that we were seeing towards the latter half of September, which was quite a steep drop from where we were in August and July. And unfortunately, the metrics have not cooperated and our case numbers continue to increase. They are back to near July levels and all the metrics seem to be headed the wrong direction. And so I really wish that we were not in the position of having to end our transition plan at the exact moment where it's not clear whether we are heading back into a July-August type scenario or whether this is just sort of a bounce from the really steep drop in in August and and things are going to level out or or maybe even go back down going into the holidays. I really hope that's the direction we're going. But it just is is so very disappointing that throughout this process, the ball, and and this is, you know, both that a state, what the state is telling us and and the reality on the ground is the the goalpost keeps getting moved. What we have to work with and go on keeps changing, and it seems just like as if we're, you know, that we reach a point where we're we're getting a little bit past this, things don't cooperate. And so, you know, if it were up to me, I wish that we could maybe find a way to ensure that we're not putting teachers in a situation next week where they don't have appropriately socially-distanced classrooms, which is what the hybrid model allows us to do, even though I recognize and and have a great deal of discomfort with its educational inefficiencies and inadequacies, but I think it is still at this point, at this moment, seeing where the numbers are trending, still a better solution than, you know, hoping that we can get these, you know, doubling the number of kids in a building potentially on any given day, five days a week, and then sort of, you know, crossing our fingers and hoping that it works out and doesn't contribute to community spread, because community spread right now is headed the wrong direction. I have been watching the zip code case number chart on the Tarrant County Dashboard for some time now, and I was really optimistic going into mid to late September that I watched the hotspots in Arlington by zip code. On that chart, darker blue is more serious and and, you know, lighter is less, you know, it's good. That's fewer case numbers. And one by one, they changed from blue towards white. We were improving. And in the last three weeks, the really the last two weeks, we have watched each one of those zip codes light back up to where the majority of zip codes in Arlington right now are are once again hotspots. And in fact, the 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 dashboard for the schools right now is showing that the Arlington High School cluster has a 99.1 case count. If it were any higher, that case count alone would send that cluster red. And I know we're not really relying on the dashboard anymore, but that's concerning to me because those numbers on that chart are only current through 9/19. And then if I can share just some anecdotal and I, you know, anecdotal evidence sometimes is, you know, not all that valuable, but, you know, I I thank the board for indulging me tonight and allowing me to attend this this virtually, because I was advised under our COVID protocols that I shouldn't attend tonight because I have four of the six members of my household right now with COVID-consistent symptoms. And we did go get COVID tested yesterday near Bowie High School at a at a rapid test location. And those workers informed us and apologized for the long wait we had to experience because the number of people that they've been testing has, in their words, really gone up the last week. So, again, you know, it's just sometimes I feel like I'm yelling out, you know, the window, metaphorically speaking. I'm screaming into the wind here, but I really wish we were not in this position and there's a lot of blame to go around from the state level to other people and, you know, they'll saying it is what it is. Well, it is what it is.
Did the mics on? Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and I appreciate it, your comments, and please make sure we stay safe as we're focused and Dr. Rosos and staff, as we move on the next agenda, I think it's it's critical. We all know this is very difficult decisions and we all know that. And we get emails from teachers about overwork. We get emails about safety. We get teachers saying, open up. We get emails from parents on both sides. And is, as we've all said, in 13 years, newer so as on the board, and this is probably the most divided we've seen. So I appreciate all the work in this group, having the discussions and open discussions, which is what we have to have. So with that, and I'll see any other items from our, my board colleagues. So let's move on to the next item. Dr. Rosos, consider motions necessary for any guidelines related to COVID-19 recently.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and we don't have anything on item E to bring forward tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Rosos. We will keep moving. Next, we'll go to our consent agenda. Do we have any items? Items to be drawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none from colleagues tonight, we'll be considering items listed on your consent agenda. Ms. Moss, I see you on my screen there and glad to see you. Thank you for staying with us tonight. Ms. Moss, would you please share our bids with us?
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, trustees and Dr. Rosos. We're presenting donations tonight totaling $224,000. The fiscal year-to-date total for donations is $284,000. Consent item C consists of six bids and consent item D consists of several items in excess of the $50,000. All bids and proposed purchases were vetted according to purchasing laws and district policies, and we're presenting this, these items to the board tonight for your consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Moss, thank you, Ms. Moss. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? I see a motion by Ms. Fowler and I see a second by Ms. Walton. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Any other items of discussion? Seeing none, we will be voting virtually slash in person. Our vote will be a roll-call vote. Please state your name and a yes. Dr. Rush?
Aaron Rush, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I say yes.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes. Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
And Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes, but I would like my vote recorded as an abstention with respect to the consent agenda item for approving donations to the district for potential conflict of interest. of interest.
Let me check to make sure Ms. Benjamin got that. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Vote is unanimous, passes with one abstention on one item, as noted. Next, we consent, we already got items withdrawn. Now we'll move to our discussion items. I do know it is late in the night, but I do think let's go through these. These are discussion, we will be voting on them in a future board meeting, so I think it's worth us to be able to discuss these, and what better way to talk about than school boundaries, which is something that has to be done and discussion, and then on a timeline or legislative agenda, which we have to discuss, because unfortunately, as our day goes on and our jobs get harder, the legislature determines more and more of what we do. So with that, we'll discuss processing timeline for redrawing school boundaries in East Arlington for new schools and some things we rolled out. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and tonight we bring just the process as a discussion item for the board to, to consider. This is the boundary process for the East Arlington Plan related to new schools, and you heard tonight, the schematic design, for example, for Berry Elementary. And so all of this is connected, and it works in, in lockstep. So Dr. Hill will present the information regarding our boundary timeline, so we can continue to, to move forward with our projects. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos, and Vice President Hogg, and board members. Again, we're looking to present information on the boundary change process, just more about timelines at this point, and wanted to just kind of walk through that process, if you will. So, struggling with the presentation here. Just a little bit about the background. This, in the 2019 bond, as you're aware, it calls for a closure of Knox Elementary and Roark Elementary, and the rebuild of Berry and Thornton Elementary Schools. As a result of that project, we will be redrawing boundaries for the impacted schools, including Berry, Blanton, Crowe, Johns, Rankin, Thornton, and of course Knox and Roark. Just to review, just what we're trying to accomplish here is to review the boundary change process and the timeline that, that's associated with that, and we kind of began some of the work already, and just wanted to kind of update the board as to where we are on that. Campus leaders have been a part of this puzzle piece that we're putting together, and I just wanted to recognize these campus leaders at this point, and as we've, again, started some of the work, and they are already identifying committee members from parents and others in their communities to kind of help go through this process of, of redrawing boundaries. Again, the Boundary Committee will be comprised of the camp, the campus principal from all of the impacted schools, and those principals, again, have identified parents from their community to help in this process. Central Office Administration, different departments from potentially HR to plant services to just administration in general to assist with that. And then Templeton Demographics, as our, our district's demographer, will help us through this process in reviewing boundaries, boundary options, rather. This process really started in earnest back in March before COVID, but then, as a result, we had to put all of that on, on, on halt. And so here's a timeline that shows from our initial planning meeting in March, all the way through when we planned to come back to you in December to, with the recommendation. Today, we're here at October 8th, presenting to you the timeline and the process. Our plan is to start on between October the 12th and the 23rd to review some draft, some draft boundaries with Templeton and the committee. The plan is to come back to the board on November 5th with a presentation to review draft boundaries and to potentially get permission to go out and hold an open forum and present that draft boundary to the committee. The plan is, if approved on that night, come back on November 13th through the 19th and hold open forums to present those draft boundaries to the committee, probably, I'm sorry, to the community. Those would likely be virtual because of the COVID impact and, and all of that. So that's the plan, and then we'll come back as a committee on November 16th through the 20th to review all of the feedback that we've gotten from the community on the, on the draft boundary, with the plan, again, to come back by December 10th to bring that recommendation to the board for approval. Again, these boundaries would take a play, take in effect starting August 2021, if approved at that time. Three of the things that we consider withdrawing, when reviewing boundaries, is, is building capacity, student population, and student safety, and so that those are just some of our pillars or our guideposts as we go into this process of looking at boundaries and anything else that may come up, but that's, that's the start that we look at when we start to go into the boundary process. And that's kind of just a summary on that. It's just wanted to update you all tonight, and then see if there are any questions or other considerations that we should be looking at as we go through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and you, for many, as long as I can remember, many years, have always taken on the task of anytime we have to redraw boundaries. And, and the good thing when we have bonds and those things is, we have schools, we're readjusting, we're making some of those. The hard part is boundaries. Boundaries are one of the most difficult things, and Mr. Hill, I truly think you have, I was going to say perfected the process, but that's always, I don't know if anything with boundaries can be perfect, but you have truly put outstanding work and feedback on those, and I'll, I'll always ask, you know, I always want to make sure as you're going through this process that the eye test passes. Sometimes, you know, as I always say, we're not the legislature, and we're not going to gerrymander and make boundaries that look overly ridiculous. And so I always want to make sure as we're going into this, we're cautious over the eye test of what seems like a natural, common sense boundary. And listen, there's always some exceptions here and there, but I always want to make sure we're going through that path. And then the last thing I'd say is, is we always ask of, as boundaries change in that future, there's always special exceptions to transfers and things. If someone's acquired a house, because that's the one they went to, and they grew up in that one, and that's where they want their children to go to school, and now there's not space, some special exceptions, which our superintendent and senior staff can always make determinations on those. My, my typical question always on a boundary change is that one right there, because it is an option, and, and, and we know boundary changes are difficult for that time, and so we have to be willing. We are not a zero tolerance district, and so we have to be willing to give on some of those. So I appreciate that, I appreciate the timeline. I don't see any questions from my colleagues, I think this is more of a insightful to see where we're trying to go. And so I thank you, Mr. Hill, and thank you for always taking on this gruesome task, which you drew the short stick sometime, somewhere a long time ago to do boundaries. So we, we appreciate your hard work always on these, and you truly have become outstanding at it. Now you're always going to get those, because you're good at it. So next, we'll go to the 2021 Legislative Agenda, and I have to thank, just starting off, our Governance Committee, who, as someone who chaired the governance in the past, it's a lot of work. And I have to thank our Governance Committee, which I, is chaired by Mr. Chapa, I think Ms. Walton, and Dr. Rush serve on this committee, and it is a, a great committee and has reviewed this legislative agenda. I think it's a really good agenda. So at this time, I think I'm throwing it to either Dr. Kavasos or Mr. Chapa, I'm not sure. I'll let you go, Dr. See.
I'll just add, Vice President Hogg, that the committee has worked on this, and staff has worked on this as well. We've had the input from David Anderson as well, from Hillco, our consultant, and so we've gone through some redlining and ultimately ended up with, with what we have tonight. So I, I will ask Mr. Chapa if he wants to make comments about the legislative agenda at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kavasos and Vice President Hogg. I'm going to just really hit the highlights for discussion purposes. This district is, is one of the more aggressive ones, I would say, at the state level in trying to assert ourselves in the legislative process and advocating for our constituents that way. And one of the things that I have really appreciated about this board's approach, especially during my, my time on the board, is we've actually have a formal legislative agenda during years in which the legislature is meeting, and then we have an interim agenda in the off years. And we meet with legislators throughout the process, we send position letters, we work closely with our advisors, our legislative advisors on this, and, and time and again, we have had a voice, a seat at the table, and it's paid off for us. And so going into the next legislative session, we have a few themes that we have been consistently pounding on for several years now. Those are still present in this proposed draft legislative agenda. Some additions that we have, have moved up or were inserted into our overarching legislative priorities relate to supports and other things related to students, to make sure that we're serving their mental health needs. We are looking at, trying to get more flexibility. Again, local control is a big issue for us, and one of the things that we would like to advocate for going into the national legislative cycle is to, you know, get some more direction about how virtual school is going to work going forward. There are some, there is a, a limited virtual school program that's highly circumscribed in the education code, and we'd like some additional clarity on what role local districts will have going forward in, in virtual learning. I know this might surprise some parents who have had quite the time with, with virtual instruction, but we have actually heard from some parents that wish we had more of an expansive explore as part of our legislative agenda. If I jump down to, again, sticking with the Red Line document, you can see that the little, some of these changes are wordsmithing changes that, that, you know, we have every year. Within local authority, we, we're taking a more aggressive stance on ensuring that the, that the TEA Commissioner cannot unilaterally sort of usurp the authority of, of school boards, local elected school boards, you know, for, for reasons that, that, you know, might be a little bit aggressive interpretations of the law. Again, we're continuing to push on the legislature to fund some of our unfunded mandates. Again, we're not opposed to some of the policy objectives of the unfunded state mandates, and some of them, we, you know, we are paying at the local level, and it's money well spent, but it is a mandate that is imposed upon us on the state, and so we would like, you know, at any given time, anytime the state imposes a mandate on us in some way, we would like commensurate funding to offset that, because there is a cost to us at the local level, and, and, you know, we, we're, we have put a VATRE on the ballot, and, and as we explained in our presentations, that adjusts the, the tax rate that is part, that, that funds our maintenance and operations fund, of which 90% of, of which goes to compensation for our staff and teachers. And so each unfunded mandate is, is literally impeding our ability to competitively pay our staff. In the school choice section of our legislative agenda, would you have a more aggressive stance here on the expansion of state charter schools, which is a part of our agenda that we've had for, for several years, and just making sure that charter schools are held to the same standards as traditional public schools, because charter schools do get state funding? And as we have experienced here at the local level, and then this is something that's occurring all throughout the state of Texas, charter schools frequently are able to attract students from us, sometimes not serve them very well, and then they end up back with us, and we have to make sort of extra efforts to catch them back up where they need to be, or to serve them correctly where they were not being properly served before. With that, rather than go over every bullet point and line item, I would just open it up for questions, if there are any at this time, and this will come back to the board after further consideration by the Governance Committee.
I'll start, I don't see any colleagues with questions. And Mr. Chapa, I think, as our discussion earlier of the career college and military readiness, I think any data points, if we need to add something, I know it's probably addressed a little more, and maybe that's like a supplement of something we had, because some of these overarching items could pertain to that, and so I would say, maybe it's not officially part of that legislative agenda, it's a supplement that goes on with that, maybe the option, or if the Governance Committee thinks it needs to be specifically called out as something, you know, and that's something that just changed from, from TEA, so I, I don't expect it to be on there. The other thing, I know we always include it, and it's not officially our agenda, but a list of all the unfunded mandates. Ms. Chapa, as you said, as we always say, it's not always that they're all bad, but we do have to point out what those unfunded mandates are, that they are asking us to do, which, when people ask, why are y'all running, why, why is your budget, what's happening? Well, here's why. We have unfunded mandates that keep coming up and popping up. I think listing those unfunded mandates is very impactful to all of our legislators when we give those. And if there's some of those other data points on accountability, Dr. Kavasos, I think those are items that are impactful, because they always, listen, legislators have a lot to cover. I'm, I'm actually, even some of them, which I don't agree with, but most of them are pretty impressive, how many different subjects they can cover, but over 50% is education. So they need to be focused, so they need those specific examples to be able to give them. And I think it's, I commend the committee, you know, good, short, not too long legislative agenda, because they have shorter attention spans than we do. So I, I appreciate that, but I think maybe a list of some of those accountability items that are a problem and our unfunded mandates may not be a bad idea as a supplement to go with the legislative agenda. I don't think we have to officially vote on those, that's just a supplement that's added in, but I think that's something that would be good for the future. I don't see any other questions. I think we're planning to bring this back at our next meeting for official approval and get the official approval, and then if we follow trend, we will start presenting to all of our legislators, once they, I think we always let them get through their November election, to make sure we know who's going to be there, and hit them in December as much possible, and it may be easy this year doing some virtual meetings. So with that, I don't see any other comments, and I commend, oh, Ms. Walton, please go right ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think that's real important, that we get in touch with our local elected officials going to representatives to Austin as quickly as we can. I really wonder if, I'm sure they're very busy with elections and whatnot, but I, I wonder if they understand what is happening to our school systems with all of the things that are going on and the edicts from Austin. I think some of them might be surprised.
You know, Ms. Walton, with a lot of things, I think some of them do, and some of them don't. So it's, I think you're right.
It's our job to tell, it's our job to, you know, educate them.
That is correct. So I think getting them, November 5th, I think the, the meeting should start beginning, and once, get them off their election high and start saying, now let's get to work on what you're trying to do. So seeing that, I don't see any other comments. We'll bring this back to the next meeting for official approvals to, to move on. Next, we'll go to open forum for non-genius items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to speak tonight on non-genius items?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. We will move on, and I appreciate that. Next, we'll go to superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg, and just a simple wishing everyone, especially our teachers, we spoke a lot about our teachers, but we can't forget our principals, assistant principals, all our employees, that they enjoy a four-day break built into this calendar and, and take some time to enjoy and stay safe for that, and, and our students as well. And again, a big thank you to all our employees for their hard work as we transition into another period of time next week. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. At this time, I'd take any school board reports. Ms. Fowler.
Last, my last year as SLAB student, Student Leadership Advisory Board student, Ms. Izzy Perez from Arlington High, she has been selected to be the senior representative from her group, but I'm so proud of her. She has already been accepted to Texas Tech University, and last weekend she was invited to tour the Honors College at Texas Tech. So I'm so proud of her and all of her hard work.
Outstanding.
She's an amazing student. Texas Tech is lucky to get her. She's wonderful.
You know, it'd be interesting to track all of our SLAB students. I mean, listen, they're, they were high achievers before we got ahold of them, so it's not like we did a lot, but it'd be, it's amazing to see some of them and what they're doing, the ones we've stayed in contact with, I know from all of us.
I know she's going to have a great senior year, and I just wish her the very best. She's an outstanding young lady, she really is.
And from that, for the board, you know, listen, SLAB's taken a little change, and Dr. Kavasos and I just had to talk about that, of how we can transition that and bring it back in, because usually the board vice president and a staff member help handle that, and so we're, we're working on some processes of how to get our current kids in in a, in a virtual, different, different way. So we, we will do that, and maybe it's in, we've talked about individual meetings with your SLAB kids over Zoom and some of those type of things, to, to get their feedback SLAB kids over Zoom and some of those type of things to get their feedback on how's this going? What's happening, I think is the first thing we get to. Ms. Walton, I see one for you.
I just had one plea. Before you buy your pumpkin to carve into a jack-o'-lantern or buy trick-or-treat candy, before you do that, plan to go to one of the many places where you can get your flu shot and get a flu shot as soon as you can.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walton.
And I have one question for Mr. Chapa. Did he want, for the secretary's report?
We're not there yet. I'll let you get there. Let me say one thing on my school board report. Just this last week, we had our TASB state convention. Congratulations to our colleagues at HEB ISD. Always anytime someone from Region 11 wins, is this board in 2014? We won Board of the Year for the state of Texas. Great Vine Colbyville has won it, I think in 2018, and now in 2020, HEB ISD has distinctly won that honor. So we have to commend them. Congratulations there. Running, they're doing a great job as a board member, as a true team. I also have to, during that same convention, congratulate our colleague that we nominated for our TASB board position. And our colleague, who we know always stands out, Mr. Chapa, was elected at the delegate assembly. And so we do have officially a TASB board member serving the AISD and representing the AISD, which is a big deal because it could help us more on legislative and also what are the largest association in the state of Texas is doing, which is TASB. So, Mr. Chapa, thank you so much for your service to serve that. Congratulations on that election and representing Arlington ISD to Region 11, but also the 5.4 million students in the entire state of Texas. We truly appreciate it from that standpoint. Now we will go over to Ms. Walton for secretary's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hogg. I wasn't real clear, did Mr. Chapa want a list of the schools where there was going to be more than 50% face-to-face next week from the administration or not?
I don't want him to generate an unnecessary report by next week, but if sometime next week we can, when it looks like they've got some clarity on what the numbers look like, if we could get a report, that would be good.
Right. I think we have some preliminary numbers, but the actual ones is what you're looking for. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think that's all of the secretary's report there is.
Anything else, you can always request staff. They're always amendable. Let me just finish and thank our IT and tech staff back there. You gentlemen and ladies did an outstanding job. You know, as we discussed, we knew we've stayed virtual probably longer for the simple fact of we know it's a lot of work to transition us to come back to this. But as we said, students are going back and staff are going back. We need to be back in person and we know it's a lot of extra work and we can't thank you enough. I see all the amount of cables that are out there and I see the boards back there, the amount of things and the microphone changes. And let me just say thank you on our behalf. It is not going unnoticed. We know how much, how difficult this is. So we truly appreciate all the work and the extra work to get us to this stage. It's, we think it's a critical factor for the district or we wouldn't have asked to do this and we can't thank you enough for all the help. So thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for all of that. Y'all are truly, I would say, one of the best tech communication staffs I've seen around because I've watched some other board members as they, boards, and they transitioned to some online because I wanted to see how they were doing it. And I commend you, gentlemen, ladies, for that. With that, it is 11:19 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.